I'm going to call to order the August 11th, 2025, meeting of the Concord City Council. Just mentioned before that we begin that devices are available for those with difficulty hearing. They are available. There are transmitters and headphones. They're available at the Concord TV booth, the black cabinet that's back there with the hand waving. Thank you, Michael. And you can obtain that and use that, and hopefully it will assist you in hearing. Madam City Clerk, let me see. Next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Would you please stand and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Brown.
Here.
Sorry about that. Mayor Champlin.
Present.
Councilor Fantasy.
Present.
Councilor Foot.
Present.
Councilor Grady Sexton.
Here.
Councilor Horn.
Here.
Councilor Keach.
Excused.
Councilor Kretovic.
Here.
Councilor Kurtz.
Present.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Here.
Councilor McNamara.
Here.
Councilor Schlosser.
Here.
Councilor Schultz.
Here.
Councilor Seku.
Present.
And Councilor Todd.
Here.
Thank you very much. We have next the approval of minute, the meeting minutes from the Finance Committee meeting of June 5th, the City Council meetings of July 7th and 14th. May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval.
Seconded and seconded. All those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Your, your honor, I just wanted to say that I have a correction for the Finance meeting minutes.
Okay.
The correction is that I did vote on the police social worker position. It says that I recused myself, and I did not.
All right. All right. Are we ready for the vote? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. The minutes are adopted with the change. It's now my pleasure to welcome our summer 2025 UNH Sustainability intern. Welcome. Welcome, Beth. Chairman Werner.
I have enough glasses.
And welcome to our intern.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilors. I'll just do a quick introduction. So we had the honor of having Kayla Maggio as our UNH Sustainability Fellow this summer. This is our fourth fellow that we've had through the UNH Sustainability Fellowship Program. So thank you each year for approving that program. We got a grant from UNH as well as support from the city to have them here to help us with various goals related to our 100% renewable energy goal. So Kayla is a student at Northern Arizona University. She's lived with us for the summer here, enjoyed our humidity. But the, I'll pass it off to her while I bring up her presentation.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor and council members. My name is Kayla, as Beth said. I'm a graduate student from Northern Arizona University studying climate science and solutions and getting my masters. And I had the opportunity to work with Beth and Rob this summer. It's been great. And so tonight I'm just going to share my results from my greenhouse gas inventory and provide some emission reduction strategies.
I apologize.
I'm cursed, Timothy.
I got it. Sorry about this.
Okay. 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 So I just wanted to define a greenhouse gas inventory for anyone that's not familiar. Essentially, it estimates the emissions that are produced by an entity in a specified time period. So in this case, this inventory is on the local government of Concord as well as the community as a whole. The goals of these inventories are to specify and point out significant energy and emission sources within an entity or community. This inventory also has the goals of comparing to the previous inventory that was done in 2019 by a fellow before me, and then evaluate the, evaluating the successes of energy efficiency upgrades that have occurred since that past inventory, and then provide emission reduction strategies to see what can be done to help reduce emissions for the city and the community as a whole. So a little bit about the process. First, I had to collect data from quite a few people. I reached out to Unitil, Liberty, to get electricity consumption and natural gas consumption data, and then many members of the City Department to get vehicle data. This was organized and processed in Excel, and I calculated the consumption of different buildings with their electricity and natural gas. And then I was able to calculate emissions from that. So the past couple of weeks have been interpreting the results and coming up with some solutions to reduce emissions. So like I said, there's two parts to this inventory. The first is the local government. So these are the different sources that I pulled data from. So all the buildings are owned by the government, streetlights, vehicle fleet, employee commute, waste generation, water and wastewater, and then process and fugitive emissions. A fugitive emission is essentially just the leakage of a gas. In this case, it's natural gas. Community focused on mainly residential and commercial energy with some industrial, transportation, solid waste generation, water and wastewater treatment, and then process and fugitive emissions as well. And so these are the results. The total number at the bottom, 577,736 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents is what Concord as a whole emitted. That includes the community and the local government. The community itself emitted that 571,000 number with the biggest sector being transportation. The local government emitted 9,659 metric tons. This, the biggest sector for the local government was both the water and wastewater treatment plants. So you'll notice, if you look at the totals of the government and the community, that does not add up to the 577 number. Because they both include the water and wastewater treatment plant, the government owns it, it's included in that inventory. However, it treats water from the community. So it's included in both inventories, but to not double count in the total, it's only included once. Just to highlight, the Hall Street wastewater treatment plant generated 1,800 metric tons, which was the highest emitting source for the government. And now I'm saying these numbers, and what does it mean? What is 577,736 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalents even look like? It's the equivalence of burning 641 million pounds of coal in one year, or 1.3 million barrels of oil in a year. It's the electricity consumption of 120,000 homes in a year. Or if you wanted to drive your typical passenger gasoline car 1.4, 1.5 billion miles, that's how much that would generate. Alternatively, if wind turbine, 173 wind turbines running for a year would offset that emission, and then 579, 503 acres of forests would absorb that amount of carbon dioxide in a year. Now, what can we do about it? What can we do about these numbers? So some emission reduction strategies that I pointed out, I think everyone knows about LED lights, car cooling, which are very effective, but I wanted to mainly focus on the Concord community as a whole. So Concord has a lot of historic buildings, and retrofitting is a good way to bring these buildings up to standard. So that does include putting LED lights, also motion activated lights, low-flow water fixtures so that you're not using high pressure when you don't need to, light-colored roofs. There's a lot of dark roofs when I was doing the GIS analysis, and those only reflect 5% of energy, whereas a light-colored roof with light-colored shingles would reflect up to 80% of energy. Alternatively, future-proofing, this is for the buildings that are going to be built in the future. So I'm thinking of that parking garage right there. Something that can be done is rooftop solar on the top of it. There's something called a solar canopy. Not only does that produce power for the building and the facility, but it protects the cars on the top from, you know, the sun. And then building these buildings in mind with the, knowing that in the future EVs are most likely going to be the predominant source, you know, the predominant vehicle. So building them now, even though they don't want to install chargers right now, if that's the case, building them so that in the future, when that does happen, you know, you're not having to retrofit to increase the electrical load. Building management system is essentially kind of like a smart building. This kind of monitors the efficiency of a building. So HVAC systems that are automatic, kind of like the motion activated lights, just, and it monitors the efficiency of a building. And then to address transportation and vehicle fleet emissions, these are more simple, but they are very effective. So anytime you brake very hard, if you're tearing a corner really sharp, if you're accelerating very fast, that's not only putting wear into your car, it's reducing the fuel economy. You're burning more fuel while doing that, which is generating more emissions. So cruise control is a great tool that I've learned to use a lot because that steady pace, it, one is better for your vehicle, and two, it's better for the fuel economy, and you're not generating as much emissions. Reducing idling, idling, more, there's a misconception that if you turn your car off and then turn it on, that's going to generate more emissions after 10 seconds. That's not the case. If you idle for more than 10 seconds, you're generating more emissions than you would if you just turned the car off and then back on. Finally, right sizing. This is using vehicles for their intended purposes. Do we need big trucks if we're not hauling things, if we're just going from point A to point B? You know, are we using these vehicles for their purpose, what they're designed for? Because larger vehicles emit more. And then I wanted to end on a case study, something that I found while going through the inventory. The Douglas and Everett Ice Arena had a water heater that was replaced in 2022. And since the previous inventory in 2019, the consumption of natural gas went down 34% in that one building from that one water heater. And so I think this kind of shows that these relatively small, you know, actions really do make a difference. And, you know, a third of that natural gas consumption has been reduced from that one action. So that's all I have. I want to thank you all for listening, and thank you, Robin, Beth.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Councilor Kurtz?
Thank you so much. I'm curious if your assessment of vehicle emissions in Concord, does it include the traffic that goes through on I-93?
Yes. So the data that I use is from Google EIE. It's essentially a tool that tracks or estimates miles driven. It includes 100% of miles that are in boundary and then 50% for cross-boundary. So those miles are included.
Do you have any sense of how it breaks out, how much of the emissions come from in-town traffic versus pass-through traffic?
That's a good, that is not something I've calculated yet, but that is a good thing that would be interesting to calculate.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Kurtz.
Schultz.
Sorry.
You cannot ask questions after each other. Sorry. Councilor Schultz.
To what degree did any issues with the state, since we host in government, it being the capital, there was anything from the state that?
Like their electricity data or, so that was, so the local government, I was able to get data from Unitil. There were some challenges. The municipal sector for Unitil included the local government, the state government, and schools. And then some municipal buildings were included in the commercial sector. And then, so it was all kind of aggregated. But for the local government specifically, I was able to get, like, utility bills to kind of separate it out, so that I'm not including state buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Kretovic.
Thank you, your honor. Certainly understand that in Arizona, solar over parking garages or parking in general creates shade for the vehicles as well as use for energy. And you said that parking garage over there, but we have three parking garages that aren't that parking garage over there. You would see that that is a recommendation on the top floor, that we could add solar to each one of our city-owned parking garages and even some of our flat surface lots that we have being solar fields in order to add electricity into our, I guess, our inventory of electricity, available electricity. You could see that even here up in the Northeast.
Yeah, I would add actually that if, I know that NHTI at least a few years ago had considered canopies, and I think that's maybe still an active consideration. However, if you go down to Amherst, UMass Amherst, it's quite striking how many of their parking lots are actually canopied by solar. And then you can plug an EV into that. So it does work very well in the Northeast.
Yeah. Massachusetts Department of California, their DCR has a lot of state parks have canopies as well with solar.
That's great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you very much for the presentation. So you were looking at data from the previous fellow, and I loved the, that you showed us about the water heater at Everett Arena. How did we do compared to the last time? Are we getting better?
Yeah. So it, it's very difficult to compare that I realized pretty early into the inventory, not only because, so this inventory includes a lot more data. The previous inventory did not include the water and wastewater treatment plants, which are a huge source of emissions for the city specifically, the government specifically. And then there were quite a few sources that were not included. And so just because there's more data, my emissions, you know, estimate is going to be higher, because the more data you include, you know, the more emissions. And then the methods that were used in the 2019 inventory were also different than mine. The, I won't get too, like, technical, but the electricity consumption, the consumption, I think we had, you know, Concord had 10 more, 10 million more kilowatt hours, like that, like you're able to compare those numbers because that's, you know, kind of concrete, but the emissions are more hard to, am I making any sense?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What we, what you could compare, how are we?
Yeah. So what I could compare, electricity usage was about 10 million kilowatt hours. Natural gas, I can't say for natural gas. That's the main number that sticks out to me off the top of my head. Emissions, though, that would be more difficult to compare.
Did you, I may have missed this in your presentation, and I apologize if that's the case. Did you do any, let's see how I phrase this. Did you segment seasons, you know, for example, you know, is our carbon emission, are our carbon emissions higher in the winter than in the summer? You know, as our summers have gotten warmer, I would think that we're using more electricity, more natural gas for those who use, you know, their gas furnace for their air conditioning, things like that.
I didn't break it down by season, but I was noticing trends. The data that Unitil sent me, it was broken down by month. And so you saw, I think July was actually the highest month for residential and commercials. I think for all three sectors, residential, municipal, and commercial. So it peaked in July, and then it went back down.
Interesting.
Yeah. So it's kind of falling, because Phoenix has a similar, we know during the summer we peak, and then we go down in the winter. I was expecting the opposite here, where you would peak in the winter because you're using more natural gas to heat your homes.
Well, not to get too conversational, but those of us who have lived here for a while have seen the change. I mean, have seen warmer, warmer winters and warmer summers. It's interesting that we now peak in July. Yeah, thank you. Other questions or? Councilor Sekul.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, and sorry if I missed it. But you said that the electrical usage from the previous intern to you was a little higher. Could you elaborate a little what was the cause of it? Because I know you got some great recommendation here, but I know people that has, like, electrical car will tell us that they saw their electrical bill go by $100, $150. Is there anything that you find during your research here that can describe that? What, why you have seen that increase in LPS?
I think, well, one, the city has grown since 2019. I think when I was, when the previous fellow did the inventory, there's only about 17,400 homes that were occupied. Mine had about 1,000 more. So that is just 1,000 more homes using more electricity. So that's, you know, going to generate more emissions and more consumption. And then, two, I'm sure with more electric vehicles since 2019. However, because of the Community Power Coalition, I broke it down so that the people that are on the Clean 50 and the Granite Plus, the emissions were calculated differently because they're not using the same power, you know, the same grid energy as, you know, I guess, the standard plan. So the emissions are a little different, but in terms of consumption, I think those are the two things that would stick out, is there's more people and more EVs, I'm sure.
Thank you. Yes, one question.
Mr. City Manager. Is there a way to correlate pricing with electricity usage? Because some people who've lived in Concord for several years will recall the years when pricing dropped high, and there was no Christmas lights for that winter. You drove around town and everybody, Rob, you remember this, there was, nobody put any lights out that year. The pricing was so high.
Yeah.
And then when pricing came down, people, and then, of course, now that LED lights came out and people started using LED. So I wonder if there's a way, and I'm not just talking Christmas lights. Is there a way, but air conditioning and everything else, is there a way to calculate that, to crunch, yes, is there a way to calculate that and correlate that towards pricing? So of course,
Yes.
If pricing goes down dramatically,
Yeah.
usage is going to go up because people don't care about leaving the air conditioner on or heating system, whatever it's going to be.
What comes to mind is the duck curve is what they call it. And so during the day, no, people aren't home, you know, typically. And so prices are lower during that time because the stuff isn't, you know, electricity's not being used. But when everyone comes home from work, they're using the ovens, they're using, you know, washer-dryers. And so I wish I knew more terminology about it to better answer your question. But I know, like, time of use is a big thing, like EV chargers.
Right.
The concern is, how, you know, when do we plan our charging? Because if we all charge at one time, then the consumption's going to be high, and then it's going to, they're going to charge us more.
Right. Peak hours, peak hours.
Peak hours, yes, yeah. So.
I would add to that, that you might be aware that the Community Power Coalition in New Hampshire is engaged with Concord just recently on time of use study. So we have these focus groups of folks that are trying to get some qualitative information from them in terms of how they operate through their day. And then there's actually people that have volunteered where mechanisms would be placed in their homes so that you can get a much better sense of the actual data, the time of use data, that I think would be informative to some of our efforts later on. So I think that's an interesting project, and we will have certainly access and ability to communicate all of that data after that project is done. And Beth, do you know when it will be finished?
I think the focus groups are just now, happening right now, and then the studies over the next three months. So probably in the springtime, we'd probably start to see some of the results of that study.
I think it'll be useful.
Thank you. Yeah. Councilor Kurtz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering if you'd be able to share the presentation with council, or if it'll be up on the city website. It's wonderful, and it's good information for us to be able to reference.
Yep, I can share that with you all, and we'll put it up. We have a sustainability page, so I'll add it to the page.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
One last thing I would like to say is another word of thanks for this council supporting our membership to ICLI USA because much of the data crunching is actually done via a tool that is used, Kayla used, through ICLI USA. So that annual membership that you all have supported continues to be of value and deliver value, so we thank you for that.
You're welcome. Kayla, thanks so much for spending the summer with us. I hope that it was enjoyable as well as a work, period of work. And please come back again, visit us, or even move here. Good luck on the map.
Thank you.
That brings us to the consent calendar on our agenda. I'll note that items 14, 18, and 27 on the consent calendar have been removed and will be taken up at the end of our meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please.
Excuse me, your honor, I am recusing myself from items 25 and 26, as my husband is a police officer.
Thank you, counselor. All those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Thank you very much. This moves us to the public hearing portion of our meeting. Since there are so many people here, I would just, by way of explanation, mention that we hold public hearings on each of the items on tonight's public hearing calendar, and then we have our action session, when the city councilors will actually discuss and take votes on each of those items in succession. So, Madam City Clerk, item 36A. Clerk, item 36A.
It is an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title III Building and Housing Codes, building regulations for demolition review.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your Honor, members of the council, the Heritage Commission has again reviewed the proposed amendment at their meeting on June 12. And upon unanimous vote, the Heritage Commission voted to recommend that the city council change the proposed amendment to the following. This will be Section D. The planning division shall also prepare a notice for posting at the site that identifies the building proposed for demolition, the date, time, and place of the public hearing. The notice shall be posted on the site by the planning division in a location that is visible from the street at least five calendar days prior to the public hearing. The sign shall be posted continuously as required. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak to item 36A? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Somebody somewhere.
I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. Please come forward. I apologize.
Just me.
All right.
Richard Jakes at the Heritage Commission?
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. I just wanted to answer a couple of questions from the last, what, two city councils meetings ago. One was the use of wording will and shall. Basically, both, both of those words are used in professional documents like that. It all goes down to the pronoun used, you know, he will, or they will, he shall, that kind of thing. And what's proposed in there was that we will or shall, and it goes on into that paragraph. And the last part of it was, the one that was proposed was to put a, put a clause that said if the signage was ever taken down during that time period, that the clock would stop. Well, according to DHR and 673, which is the statutes for commissions and everything, you cannot, on a demo review like that, you cannot have an indefinite time. It has, so that time that's predicted in the beginning is the same one that follows. So what we'll do as a city and as a commission is just really make sure that that sign doesn't come down and express to the owner or the property manager or whatever that that sign needs to be up. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. I'll note that Mr. Jakes is the chairman of the Heritage Commission. Any questions for Mr. Jakes? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like your hat, by the way.
Different sale.
I have one. Would anyone like, else like to testify on item 36A? Going once, going twice? All right. Now I do declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 36B.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title IV Zoning Code, Chapter 20, zoning ordinance for non-conforming lots, uses, and structures.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, RSA 67439AA was amended by House Bill 284 in 2021 to repeal the deadline of December 31, 2021. As, as such, is necessary to update the city's zoning ordinance to similarly remove the deadline. The planning board reviewed its proposed amendment on June 18, 2025, and voted to recommend approval. So this is really just a housekeeping order.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 36B? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Madam City Clerk, item 36C.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title II Traffic Code, Chapter 18 Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Parking Prohibited During Certain Hours and Months in Designated Places, Modifying Parking Requirements on School Street Between Pine and Liberty Streets.
Mr. City, thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your honor, members of the city council, the parking committee discussed the referral on June 30. Hearing testimony supporting a return to restricted parking and a desire to keep the parking unrestricted or alternative to a return to the two-hour restrictions, ultimately following discussion and examining alternatives, committee recommended the north side of School Street between Liberty and Pine be restricted to no parking between the hours of 7:00 AM and 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday during the months of September through June. Glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any questions for the city manager? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 36C? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 36D.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $90,000 in the Water Plant Improvements Project, replacing a failed boiler and authorizing the issuance of water general obligation bonds and notes in the sum of $90,000 for this purpose.
Mr. City Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, unfortunately, the boiler casing has failed at the water plant, water treatment plant, and requiring replacement. This expense was budgeted, however, the boiler was not, the boiler's not reached the expected replacement timeframe. We anticipated it would hopefully last until 2030. Simply moving the project up four years is what we're proposing. Through aggressive pricing, the current cost replacement for the boilers $87,120. We had budgeted $150,000 in 2030, so if you approve this project, we would remove that. And when we do the next budget, that $150,000 proposed expense.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Counselor Luke Brown.
Yes. The $90,000 to be bonded, is that coming through the water fund? Will it have an impact on rate increases?
It will come through the water fund. It won't have an impact on rate increases until you decide you want to look at the rates again next year.
Okay, until next year.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, thank you. In that case, I'll open the public hearing. Item 36D. Is there anyone who would like to testify? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 36E.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $14,000 for human services assistance and accepting a donation in the sum of $14,000 from the trustees of the Protestant Episcopal Church of New Hampshire for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, I recommend that you take the money and, and that you allocate the funds to the Human Services Department to be administered under the guidance of the Human Services Director for whatever welfare purposes we may need.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I'm sorry, you said that the funds will go directly to Human Services Department, not to a reserve or anything like that. It's just going directly to them. Okay, thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Just, sorry, clarification, I've done that in the past.
Okay.
This isn't anything new.
Counselor Horn.
Just out of curiosity, why do we have to do it retroactively to the last fiscal year?
Because the money came in on June 27.
Any other questions? All right. In that case, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 36F, please.
It's a resolution retroactively appropriating to June 30, 2025, the sum of $27,500 as a transfer to the Highway Reserve and accepting the sum of $27,500 from Shaw's supermarkets for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, so in this case, these dollars would be put into the Highway Reserve Fund, which you would then have to take a vote and appropriate those dollars to use for whatever purpose you wanted to. Generally, use Highway Reserve Funds for street paving, sidewalk improvements, whatnot, but this would be money that you would have to allocate in the future. We would not be able to just go out and spend these dollars.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Counselor Brown.
Yes, so it's a financial contribution. How was this $27,500 calculated? Why, how did they get to that number?
It's whatever was calculated based on the planning board at the time. Whatever the planning board approval was, this would have been the requirement that they make that.
Follow-up.
Yes, follow-up. So is it in lieu of something else, like in lieu of a sidewalk?
Generally. That's how it's done, and many times, particularly if we're planning on doing some improvements, I don't recall what was being done 25 years ago, but when improvements were being made, if we know something's going to happen, instead of having somebody do the improvement and then us having to go have to rip that out later on, we'll take the cash and then use the cash for whatever purpose the city council wants to use it for in the future. But generally related to the projects.
So if I wanted to see, you know, how they cal, they came up with the $27,000, the planning board would have that documentation?
Not necessarily.
Oh. How would I find that? How would we?
You may not be able to find it. Because this is a planning board, is a planning board decision that was made based on a calculation that the developer generally will come up with a number and negotiate with the planning board. And the planning board will say that is acceptable to us. I can't tell you. Now, there may be a calculation saying, this is what it's going to cost to do something, we calculate, but this, again, this is $27,000.
So this is ju, this is through a negotiation with the planning board? That's how the number was, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? All right, in that case, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 36F? I'll close the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, item 36G.
It's a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the Boston and Main Corporation, subsidiary of CSX Transportation Incorporated, concerning the acquisition of portions of the Boston and Main, Northern Main Line Railroad for the purpose of facilitating the Merrimack River Greenway Trail Project, appropriating the sum of $140,000 in the Merrimack River Greenway Trail Project, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and notes in the sum of $105,000, and authorizing the transfer and use of $38,000 from the Recreation Impact Fee Fund for this purpose.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Your honor, members of the council, on June 14, 2021, the city council approved Resolution 9379, which authorized the city manager to enter into a purchase and sales agreement to acquire a 5.7-mile segment of the Northern Main Line located between Horseshoe Pond Lane and the Cootocock River from Pan Am for the sum of $431,500 for the purpose of extending the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. The purchase and sales agreement for the Northern Main Line, which was signed on July 7, 2021 by the city, and Pan Am was expressly subject to the state of New Hampshire right of first refusal for the property in accordance with RSA 22860-A. On October 18, 2021, the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, in accordance with that RSA, invoked its right of first refusal. However, prior to the final execution of memorandum of standing and finalization of the purchase and sales agreement, CSX Transportation acquired all of the Pan Am Systems Inc., New England Holdings, which ultimately halted all pending real estate transactions related to the rail corridor. The updated appraisal that we had to undertake working with CSX increased the purchase price by $103,500 from $431,500 to $535,000. In addition, the city incurred additional expenses for CSX negotiations, including expedited appraisal, complicated title work, and survey. As a result, the supplemental appropriation amount of $143,000 is required to complete this purchase. Staff recommends supplemental appropriation be supported using a combination of general obligation bonds and recreational impact fees, and you can see that in the attached resolution. So eventually, we're back tonight because the, now that CSX has it, they would like more money for this property. Otherwise, I wouldn't be back. We would have completed this purchase and been on our way. Be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for the city manager? Counselor Brown.
Yes, I believe it was back in 2014 when we were originally talking about this. Mr. City Manager, you talked about the economic development of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail and how great that would be for the city. I'm wondering how mu, how much money is in the Economic Development Reserve's fund, and if that is something that we could consider applying to this?
I don't know.
Oh, well, is that something that our finance director couldn't tell us?
Could look up. We provided all that information to the city council, I think, just last month.
Friday.
Friday? Friday. So whatever it is, we provided to you on Friday.
How much money is in the Economic Development Reserve?
I think we sent, I think, yeah, I think we sent all that. Wasn't that?
I have from 2024, the end, I believe, was $252,000. That was fiscal year 2024.
Off the top of my head, Counselor.
Welcome, Mr. LeBrien.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, off the top of my head, I don't recall exactly how much is in there, but I can look it up and get back to you. I just don't remember.
Okay. I, I know the MS-9 report, the last we had.
That was the end of 2020, fiscal year 2024, or at the end of fiscal year 2025. That MS-9 report will be coming to the city council hopefully in September, trying to finalize things after the end of the fiscal year.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? The city manager. Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, there's been much conversation through public testimony about a condition of the CSX purchase, that the trail or the rail line be removed. Is that our request or a request from CSX?
CSX.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to testify on item 36G? Mr. Lemieux.
Good evening. My name is Dick Lemieux. I'm the president of the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. I've been the president for 14 years, and sitting next to me is Kelly Ovitt Puck, who is the chair of our board. So.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us today and for allowing us to testify on this matter, because we think it's very important. We've been involved in the development of this trail since, well, for 14 years. I'm just going to read a few things here to you. We've been working for 14 years, 16 years, if you count feasibility study and the public meetings, where we determined that there was broad community support for this project. In 2010, we obtained a $17,000 grant to pay for an engineering feasibility study, which determined that the trail along the river is feasible. And we did all that before we approached the city with a plan to develop the trail. We presented the plan to the planning board, and they incorporated into the, incorporated the concept of the MRGT into the master, the city's master plan. Because of our involvement in the last 14 years, Phase 1 of the project was built in, was completed in 2020, and it was built with zero, zero city funds. We paid for that with a grant, a federal grant, that we matched dollar for dollar. Phase 2 was built with only 18% federal funds. We paid for the rest in using a, using a federal grant that we also participated in, in applying for. Overall, considering the funds, the funds spent on the boardwalk, the Pan Am appraisal that we paid for, phases 1 and 2, $909,000 has been expended on the Merrimack River Greenway Trail to date. And the city has spent only $124,700 of that. So the city has, has bought this trail for 14 cents on the dollar, primarily because of our involvement. In partnership with the city, we have raised over $2 million, including a $1 million grant from the Transportation Alternatives Program called TAP. We'll be mentioning that again. And that, that grant is sitting, waiting to be allocated, waiting to be appropriated, for the first project on the rail trail, which will go from, from, from the Bosquins Town Line to Souls Falls Road. If the city, we think if the city makes significant changes in the approach to the project, in the, in the scope of the approved project, we think the city runs a risk of losing that grant, because the, the project that we applied for was very specific. It was, it was to pay for the construction of a rail trail from the city line to Souls Falls Road.
So, as some of you know, because some of you were here, that when we were, we spoke to you in 2021, this has been a long time coming. So, well, we've been working on this since 2014. The city's been working on this for a long time, hand in hand with us. The rail corridor that we were talking about was originally technically abandoned, which means that it is no longer in use. The railroad has gone to the Surface Transportation Board, which is its regulator, and said, we're not going to use this anymore. We're abandoning our rail use. In 2017, when our board found out about this, we were right on it. We helped initiate discussions with Pan Am at the time, which owned the railroad corridor. We We helped get the appraisal done. We helped pay for the appraisal. We were ecstatic when the city council voted to acquire it in 2021. And then, pun intended, we got derailed. And now, we're here again, four years later, hoping that this project will get back on track. And we're asking you today to confirm the choice that you made in 2021, that this is an important amenity to the city, that this acquisition will benefit the residents and the community. We had support by a petition in 2017. And in 2021, Dick told me the numbers are 2,774 signatures between those two petitions, which were overwhelmingly Concord and Pennacook residents. I know you've heard from a lot of our supporters recently, too. We did not resubmit those petition signatures. So all of the new support is recent current support. And if you got the chance to look at the emails that came in today even, you hear the passion in your residents' voices. We talk to lots of them every year, at market days, at the Sunflower Festival that was just this past weekend, where the second phase of our trail is on the ground and beautiful and gets use every day for free. Your residents are passionate about this, and we hope that you continue to be too. And I just want to personally say thank you to all the people who have stepped up and emailed you and who are here today to show their support, because that means a lot to us. Do you have anything else you want to say?
Yeah, and just to confirm, to say that we are in favor of you approving the resolutions before you tonight would be an understatement. Of course, we want to see that happen. We're not completely happy with the purchase and sales agreement. There are things that we would like to change if we had the opportunity, but we're willing to accept it the way it is. It's a good deal. It's a good deal for the city. It's a good deal for the Greenway Trail. So we're going to have some more comments to make on some of the alternatives that have been suggested in the comments, in the public testimony to this item. So we'll come back after those, you know, recommendations are made.
Could you make them now so that we can just, I mean, if you already know that you're going to make those presentations?
You want us to speak to the?
Sure.
Okay, I'm ready to go. I'm going to ask Greg Backus to come up here and help me with this. So we want to address four major points that the, did you say something?
No, I'm okay.
We wanted to address four major points that the scenic rail riders have made. The first one is that since the right of way is 80 feet wide, there's plenty of room for trail. It's true that the right of way is 80 feet wide, but that leaves the rail itself and the ties are eight feet wide. So that leaves 38 feet on each side. To split it, you have to have the trail, has to be on one side or the other. So Greg has sent some photos around that show. The top photo will show what we're proposing. And you can see that the red area goes right on top of the existing rail line. And that's shown to scale as closely as possible. That is the actual, that is an aerial photo of our trail. It's not effectually from anywhere else. And on the upper right, you'll see the standard configuration for a rail with trail, which is what the scenic people, the scenic rail riders have suggested. So it's basically, in this picture, it shows the rail on the left and the trail on the right. So that trail would have to be built on essentially virgin ground, where it hasn't been disturbed before. So all that would have to be dug up. It would have to be, the soil would have to be dug up and removed to dispose of anything that's not suitable, like topsoil. So topsoil is good for growing, it's not good for building trails on. And then they would have to bring in truckloads, mini truckloads of gravel to build up the base to pave on. So the yellow, the yellow and orange wedges show that the additional material would have to be brought in to make the trail level. And that orange triangle shows that the property would have to be disturbed a fair distance out from the edge of the existing railway. So in that area, now if you go to the bottom left photo, you'll see our sketch of what they're recommending. So you still see the rail there that's not moved, and the trail is alongside of it. So there's a certain separation that's needed. And then the trail is built customarily. It would be a 10-foot wide trail with two 2-foot shoulders. So, and then at the bottom right is a chart that's meant to illustrate that we haven't calculated the costs. That's not our job. But the, there will be additional costs, and there will be significant additional costs to go with that alternative, because with our alternative, there are no trees to be cut, essentially. There are no bridges that will need to be widened. There would be no culverts that would need to be lengthened. There would be no bringing in or taking out of unsuitable material and bringing in of gravel. And the cost estimate of our project and the TAP grant that we submitted in 2021, it was $1.34 million. And because of all the delays and inflation during that time, we now think the cost would be about $2.14 million. So the size of the grant hasn't increased. Our fundraising capability hasn't increased. But here we have, you know, we have a significant increase in cost due to the delay. How much that cost will increase again if we go from the rather simple rail trail project to the rail with trail project? We don't know. It's not our job to calculate that. Why don't you take it from here, Greg?
Sure, yeah. I think one thing Dick didn't mention was that building a parallel facility next to the existing track has environmental impacts as well. Having walked the corridor, we know that there are wetlands. We know that there are structures that Dick mentioned that are not wide enough to maintain two facilities. So would you need to build a separate bridge next to them or that sort of thing? There's a lot of, I think, a lot of questions, because we haven't studied that in depth. And we're hoping the rail riders have. Doing a parallel facility is not as easy as it sounds. If somebody says, "Well, just build it right next to it," I think this diagram illustrates that there are slopes involved, there are constraints, there's wetlands, and there's permitting that would be compounded, I think. So when we use federal money, we have to go through the NEPA process. Some of you are probably familiar with that. You have to do alternatives analysis, and you have to arrive at the lowest impact feasible solution. And on grade or on alignment would obviously be the easiest and most feasible and least environmentally damaging solution. So there's that hurdle as well. The federal government will go through that process. I guess I would leave it at that as far as, you know, just raising awareness that it's not as easy as it may sound to build a parallel facility.
So I should have introduced Greg. This is Greg Backus. He's a member of our board, and he's also a registered professional engineer who designs trails for a living. So he does know what he's talking about. So that's the first point. The second of the four points is that the suggestion that the trail, the MRGT, the Merrimack River Greenway could be built between the rails. Immediately, that's not a good idea, because the standard width of a railroad track between the rails is 48 and 1/2 inches. It's been that way since before there were railroads in this country, when they started in England. At any rate, 4 feet 8 and 1/2 inches is not enough, not enough room to put a 10-foot wide trail. So there's an example, in fact, the people who quickly suggest this example in the Cotton Valley Rail Trail, which is here in New Hampshire. And so it is a trail that's 4 and 1/2 feet wide, and it goes between the tracks for a while, then it goes off to the side, and then it runs alongside the tracks for a while, and it goes back to between the tracks. So every time you go from between the tracks to the side of the track, you have to cross a track. And these tracks are used by unpowered buggies, I think they are, rail buggies that have railroad wheels that have flanges. Flanges make a groove beside the rail. So when you're trying to get from one side to the other on your bike, your wheel gets caught in this groove, and people go down. So I went to a place called TrailLinks, TrailsLink.com, and they had 68 reviews of the Cotton Valley Rail Trail. I only looked at the first 40, the most recent 40. Out of those 40 reviews, 31 reviewers reported something negative about the safety. They said, "Watch out if you ride it." They said, "It's dangerous." There aren't enough warnings. You can't pass another cyclist when you're going in the same direction. So somebody has to stop. The same thing with a pedestrian. If you're trying to pass a pedestrian, the pedestrian has to pull over, pull off to the side. 13 reviewers reported personal injuries to themselves or others in their party, ranging from a cut knee to one person getting a concussion and a fractured arm. Both the same person. One reviewer stated, "Nine riders went in, only four came out unscathed." There were only nine of the 40 reviews that didn't mention any hazards or any safety issues. So the trail between the existing rails would be, in our opinion, would expose the city to unnecessary liability and would expose our neighbors and us to inherent dangers. So, you know, please don't consider that alternative any longer. The third item is that the city should renegotiate with CSX to leave the rails in place. So I don't know if they did any cost, looking into the cost, but we did. So we found that the price, the salvage value of a steel rail varies between $40 and $75 per linial foot. It sounds like a lot of money, and it's a big range, but there are a lot of factors that go into the price. So when the Friends of the Northern Rail Trails, when the Friends of the Northern Rail Trail bought a section of this corridor that's just to the north of the section we're looking at, and they were asked to remove the rails, they were asked to hire a railroad contractor to remove the rails and to transport them and store them on New Hampshire DOT property. When they did that, the people who were in charge on the NRT, on the Northern Rail Trail, and spoke to the railroad contractor, who told them that that rail is worth $2,000 per stick. So a stick, in railroad language, is a 39-foot length of rail. Why 39 feet? Because that's the length of a boxcar, and that's how they transported them forever. So when we use that estimate, it comes out to $51 per linial foot. There are 60,200 linial feet of rail in the 5.7-mile section of a rail property that we're looking at buying. So that steel that's in the corridor right now has a value between $4.5 million. If we base the estimate on the cost of the value given by the railroad contractor, it comes out to $3.1 million. So that's more than five times the value of the land that the city is buying. So if the city goes back to the CSX and insists on keeping the rail in place, you can expect to pay the value without rail. It's worth more to them than it is to us. So to be fair, they have suggested that we leave the rail in place only on the half of the trail that they're using. So the additional cost, if they remove the rail from half the corridor and left the rail on the other half, the cost would be about $1.5 million. So to do that, to be able to build a rail with trail, you'd have to factor in $1.5 million to pay for the rail that would be left in place. That's assuming that CSX would even be willing to do that. And then the additional cost to build on the side, removing all the material, you know, building a trail on area where there isn't a rail, there isn't a bed already. And fourth, Gary LeBlanc from the rail riders has indicated that his displeasure, that the city didn't consult him during the process. And I can tell him that the city didn't consult us either. I was pounding on Matt Walsh's door probably twice a month while he was in charge. And then I was also bothering Beth Fenstermark when she was doing the negotiating. And believe me, they didn't tell us anything. So we didn't know what was going on until the agenda for this meeting hit the public website last month. So again, we want to encourage you to complete the process we started in 2015, whenever that was. We want you to, we would like you to basically get this project underway. We're poised and ready to start raising money to match the TAP grant. And we don't want to see us lose the TAP grant. It was really hard to get, and we've been waiting for a long time for this. So I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Backus, professional engineer and trails guru. Can you explain to the council and our audience what the National Trails System Act of 1983 is?
I cannot.
You can't?
I designed them. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
It's new. Can you?
As a matter of fact, I can. I'll express it later so other people can speak.
Appreciate it.
Yes, the TAP grant, could you repeat again how much that TAP grant is that you need to find, we need to match?
So the estimate that we worked up when we applied for the grant, in fact, it was 2021, the estimate was $1.337 million. The maximum size of the grant that we could apply for is $1 million, and it needs to be matched to 20 cents for each $80. So to match the federal, to match a $1 million grant, we could take a fundraising of $250,000. But the $1.25 million wouldn't be enough to build the trail. Even at that price, we were limited by the maximum amount of the grant. So if we were still building it for that price, we would have to raise $334,000. But since the costs have gone up so much right now, if we were to do it right now, it would be about one, we'd have to raise about $1.2 million to completely fund the trail.
Could you say again, what is the expiration of that TAP grant? How?
It didn't come with a fixed expiration date, but we've been, the state has been allowing us to, has been holding it for us since 2021. So it's four years old. But I think the way they do it is they'll spend the oldest money first. So the actual, you know, the money is fungible. So the money that they actually awarded us is not the same as the money we will eventually get. So they're rolling the money forward to other projects.
We feel we're on thin ice right now. It's been so long. The feds don't like to let projects languish. So the sooner the better. And we have heard that DOT has recognized that escalation has been occurring on all of these TAP projects, and they are trying to increase the grant amounts beyond what we originally requested. So we're hoping we can at least build the same length that we were originally hoping to build. But that will increase our match challenge.
Some more follow-up? Yes. So, you know, in best-case scenario, when do you want to start fundraising? When do you want to submit? What's your ideal timeline for that happening?
You approve this grant, this resolution tonight, we'll start raising money tomorrow.
And submit, when would you, follow-up? And when would you hope to submit it by?
Submit what?
The funds. So you said $250,000 is what you would need to raise to then submit it to the state to access the TAP grant?
It isn't needed until it starts getting spent.
Okay.
So through the design process and the construction process, we would help the city fund it.
It's not, if I could, it's not just, it's not a grant. The state's not going to, the feds aren't going to send us a check for $1 million. It's a reimbursable program. So they will issue, we will ask, hopefully, as soon as we purchase the land or maybe even before we actually purchase it, we'll ask for, the city should be asking for an authorization to proceed. When they get the authorization to proceed, that sets the date after which any charges that are eligible can be reimbursed. So then the city would be submitting monthly, quarterly bills as they pay them. They'll be submitting bills to the state. The state will submit them to the feds. The feds will pay the state, the state will pay us. The city will pay the contractors or engineers.
We don't get paid.
Yeah.
We don't get paid. We're an all-volunteer board.
Follow-up?
Yes. So that's ongoing. So, you know, let's say, so you incur costs, let's say, $300,000. Do you keep fundraising and will, can you continue to fundraise and continue to get money? That's an ongoing process for this grant?
Yes, we've been raising money for 14 years. We need, the best applications for... We need, the best applications for asking for grants are when you have a demonstrated need and a deadline. So we know, when we know we need to raise so many, you know, a hundred thousand dollars by such and such a date, we tell the, you know, the granters that, and that helps make our case. So we have not started earnestly raising money to match the TAP grant yet, even though it's been there since 2021. That doesn't mean it's been sitting in our hands. We've been raising money for the phase two, phase one, phase two, and now phase three, which we hope to be completing this year.
Nice.
So this is just loading the pipe.
Yeah.
We hope this is raised, we hope this is phase four.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to testify?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I am Gary LeBlanc, owner of Scenic Rail Riders, along with my family. Thank you for having me here.
Welcome.
I have a few things that I'd like to read. Okay, first off, please know that we are not trying to stop the purchase of the rail trail happening, okay? That's not our intent here. We're only looking to see if we can coexist as two entities. We think it's beneficial for both us and the city. We bring in a lot of people, and we would hope that you guys would consider that. Now, back in 2019, the city was very welcoming to us with the idea of starting a small tourism business, and we were grateful for that. Now it seems like the city just kind of wants to give up on us as a small business, which we don't feel is great at all. You know, hopefully you guys will consider things differently. New Hampshire already has two other rails, trails with rails, and they're in the process of getting a third in the Madison area. I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but there's another one going to be happening up there as well, Trail With Rail. These trails can work, and they are safe, you know, so they just have to be done properly. And as the engineer mentioned, you know, as long as it's designed properly, it can be safe for both. Okay, as to, let's see. Okay. Today, I communicated with CSX, and they told me that when you guys sign the PNS, my lease and the rails are going to be assigned to the city at closing, okay? So I'm going to become your tenant, let's say, when you guys sign the deal. And CSX is expecting you guys to tell them what you want to do with the rails, whether you want all of them to go, whether you want part of them to go. They're expecting you guys to tell them what to do. Now, I proposed to them, would you consider retaining ownership of the rails, you know, removing the southern half that we don't use, remove those rails, and retain ownership of the rails that we do use, and allow us to lease those rails from CSX while they sit on your property? And they said that, you know, we would have to discuss that with the city. So they're amenable to it, and it's not going to blow up your deal if you go back and talk to them. You know, I didn't get that feeling at all from talking with Jessica. And as Dick mentioned, the rail corridor is eighty-two feet wide, so I think we can have enough to fit in there. You guys are looking at doing from Sewell Falls to the bridge as the first section of trail. I don't know if you're aware, but three-quarters of that section had a second track alongside of it. So the base is there for three-quarters of it, okay? The rest of the trail, about eight-hundred feet, that would need some additional work where it's not wide enough because the banks drop off on both sides. I have some suggestions for that as well. I just need somebody to listen and somebody to talk to to go over those suggestions. Thus point, you know, the only answers I've gotten are, we can't talk to you about it because we don't own it. Well, you're about to own it, so when can we start talking? You know, would be my thing. Okay, so that's the northern piece, the first section. And I don't know what the, which section would be next, I haven't heard. But assumedly, the section between Sewell Falls and Second Street, you have an alternative already in place there that people already walk and bike. It's the sewer line easement that runs from our parking lot all the way to Second Street. City did substantial amount of grading work on that last summer, and, you know, I mean, I've driven my truck down there to do some maintenance on the track stuff. So that pathway, it already exists, and it has a substantial base, you know, that you could easily put a little bit of gravel down and just pave it right away. That's one mile of track that could be done without having to even worry about the railroad stuff. So that, I would propose using that corridor, of which the city owns basically the majority of it. There's a piece that's about four-hundred-and-eighty feet long that's owned by Unitel, but assumedly you guys have an easement through that already. So I would assume you have no problem with an easement through the trail to go over that four-hundred-and-eighty feet. And then the additional seven-hundred feet you're going to acquire with this purchase, which is my parking lot and an additional five-hundred feet in from it. So you guys would basically have most of that as being owned by the city as it is. So that seems like a simple solution to that one-mile stretch, in my opinion. All right. Now, the whole thing with tourism, I spoke with Mr. Mayor this morning, my wife and I. We did not get the feeling that the city of Concord was really concerned about losing the amount of tourism we're bringing in. We bring in anywhere between eleven to thirteen thousand people a year. Ninety-four percent of those people are from outside of the Concord area, okay? Fifty percent of those people are from outside of New Hampshire. I mean, we get people from all over the U.S., we get people from outside of the country. They come to New Hampshire to vacation, they find us, you know. And in some cases, we have people coming to New Hampshire just to do our rail bike tours. They come to do our tours, they go out to dinner, out to lunch. So they're spending money, you know, in other businesses in Concord from coming to see us. We've got very good reviews. We run a very organized and very nice tour for people, and people really seem to enjoy it. To lose that, if we don't have to, I think would be a shame. You know, I mean, Concord doesn't really have a lot of big tourist attractions. I think we're probably one of the biggest ones that are bringing people to Concord. I mean, you guys can prove me wrong, but, you know, in my opinion, we're kind of the biggest tourist attraction you guys have. So I think that should be considered in this. So basically, I'm imploring the council to work with us, give us a shot at proving, you know, that we can coexist with a trail. You know, that's our feeling with Scenic Rail Riders. We're a small company, you know, it's a mom-and-pop shop. It's my wife and I and my three kids. That's it, you know, and it's like, we're not getting rich here, we're just making a living. You know, and we'd like to continue doing that. I mean, I look at this as, you know, we would like to be here another thirty-plus years. You know, we're in this for the long run. My two boys want to take it over when I'm done doing it. So we're not planning on going anywhere. So if you guys would consider that and talk to us, let's see how we can, you know, possibly make this work. You know, and as far as leasing the rails, I mean, that's something I'm willing to work out with CSX, you know, and that won't cost the city anything. It'll be, you know, us paying CSX to lease those rails. And down the road, I mean, we can set lease agreement up so that down the road, if something happens and, you know, we're done and we pull out, we can have it arranged so that CSX can come and collect those rails at that point without a cost to you guys. So that's our proposal.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. LeBlanc? Counselor Kredovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. LeBlanc, thank you so much for coming out this evening and for sharing with us the passion that you have for your business and this tourism that you bring to our community. It really is appreciated by the city council. The city council was not the entity that approved your business back in 2019, it was the planning board. And the planning board had mentioned to you at that time this rail corridor project and had asked you specifically what the plan was, if this was to move forward, and it believed that your response, and you could probably confirm that or not, was, "I'll figure it out at the time."
Here we are.
It's the time, and here we are. But I did want to just express my appreciation for you being here and hope that we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Horne?
I certainly don't want to lose your tourism. I've personally had friends come in from on this state to go with me on the Rail Riders. Do you employ anybody locally that isn't your family there?
Yes, yep. We employ about seven, eight people a season.
Every season?
Every season, yeah. And it's actually the same people, they come back year after year. My employees have been with me for five or six years now.
Follow-up?
College, high school students, maybe, or?
Mostly college. I've had a couple of high school kids this year from Concord area, kids in college, so I lose them basically now. And then I've got that out of college as well, so.
Counselor Brown?
Yes. So I was just out by your property today, and you had a great display of different things available and also distances to other attractions. But I'm interested, you said that the city did a lot of work on the section right next to the rail?
Yes.
What was that? Was that in support of the business?
No, that was, you know, they're basically shoring up that access road that they use to service the sewer line.
Okay.
Okay? Because there's a sewer line that runs from Sewell Falls all the way to Second Street down that whole corridor. And they maintain it. They mow the grass. In fact, the other day I was there, I had to wait on my speech because they were out there with their hedge trimming machine, trimming the hedges back on both sides.
Right, I saw that.
So.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Other questions? Mr. LeBlanc, how many days a year are you open?
About a hundred and twenty-eight or so.
How much do you charge?
We charge ninety-five dollars for a two-seat bike and a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a four-seat bike.
Okay. And that's up and back?
That's round trip.
Yeah, round trip.
Yeah. And that usually takes about an hour and a half to an hour and forty-five minutes.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Welcome. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city manager, city clerk. I'm Roy Schweiger. I'm going to say something that no one else is going to say tonight, and that is, I think you should vote this down. And the reason is that Concord is not a rich community. Concord, the average family income is ten thousand dollars less than the county as a whole. And unfortunately, we, you know, seem to have people working for the city that make good money and don't seem to understand this. Because my feeling about this whole thing is, the state wanted this piece of land for their permanent rail corridor, and we should have let them buy it. We shouldn't be spending city money buying this thing that the state would happily buy for us. The state is also spending, as he's talking about, good money to build rail trails. Why are we, you know, looking to find city money to build rail trails when the state would do it for us? So I would like to suggest you not only vote down the additional funds, but you take the funds previously allocated, you put them back into surplus, and you use them to reduce taxes. I think if you ask people in the city, that would be what they'd want to do, is let's let the state pay for buying this railroad, and let's let the state, you know, look into the rail trail, and let's use the four-hundred thousand dollars or whatever it is to reduce the tax rate. And, you know, maybe this TAP grant they're talking about, they could use it for that, or maybe they've got other money to pay for it, but I don't think the taxpayers should be paying for this. And the other thing I'll say is, because you're going to ignore that, you're the city council, you like to spend money, you're going to insist the city should pay for this instead of the state. I think that both of the previous people have had, you know, good points in what they're talking about. For instance, I think that when it comes time to building this rail trail, it's probably going to cost far more to dig up those ties, which it has its waste, and grade it off than it would be to pave the utility easement. So that whole segment, they might do better to use the sewer easement even if there wasn't the Rail Riders to talk about. I actually have not only walked the segment of rail trail in Concord, I've also walked the one in Madison. And note that I use the term "walked." Most of the people on that trail walk it. They're not riding bicycles and breaking their collarbones. They're not riding those speeder cars, which are powered and are run very rarely. They're just walking along. And it is possible to share, if you have that attitude, that particular thing that they have to do is the same thing that they're going to have to do here. There are bridges on that section of line. It is not easy to, you know, widen a bridge. So that may be where you have to put things together. I think that Mr. LeBlanc was correct. You cannot build a reasonable bike path of the sort he likes between the rails, and he would like, it would be far cheaper for them to take up the rails, take up the ties, and grade it off flat than it would be to try and put it on one side or the other. Just as I'm sure that Mr. LeBlanc has no idea that he really wants to put down rail ties on one side of the other existing track and put in new rails. So I think that, you know, sharing has got to be a, you know, process that they've got to agree on in some manner. And I think that this is the sort of thing, you know, don't rush into buying this. You know, find out. How much of it can you, you know, really put both of them in? Let everybody get together on what's going to happen with the rails. I feel like maybe a new thirty-nine-foot rail of, you know, standard width, standard thickness is worth that kind of money. But those rails have been sitting out there a long time. They're probably substandard for current rail use. I have a feeling that, you know, they may basically hardly be worth the cost of picking them up because they're old rusty rails that are too thin. But nobody really knows, because nobody has gone directly out and asked CSX what they want for them. They've talked to a rail contractor who, I don't know if they've seen these particular rails or not. And so, you know, they need to, you know, get some better numbers. They don't need to rush into this. And I'm just afraid, you know, I was very pleased fourteen years ago when they were talking about the Merrimack River Green Rail Trail. They're going to build two trails up both sides of the river, and that was great. Fourteen years later, they've essentially built no trails. What they've done is they paved a section of trail through a city park off of Manchester Street. They've paved an existing road past the sunflower thing. So all they're essentially doing is spending money on paving existing trails. They haven't come up with a new thing at all because they won't spend the money to, you know, bridge that swamp. And part of the reason is that they want to gold-plate everything. They want this huge wide paved trail. And I think if the city is going to start paying for this, we need to say, okay, you're paying for it, you can build it as wide and with pavement if you want to, but the typical rail trail must not paved. It's gravel. It is far cheaper. It's not as wide as they're talking about. So we could build a very nice rail trail and have it done already if we built to a reasonable standard for a trail instead of this gold-plated, wide-paved thing. We could have had that swamp thing built by now if we, you know, left the existing things in gravel instead of paving them. So we need to, you know, tell the Greenway people, sorry, you know, don't ask us for any money if you want to build this fancy paved trail. We would rather have more of it built to a lesser standard because the people that walk on it that time, people can bike on a gravel trail, they do it all the time. You can get strollers, wheelchairs that you can use on gravel. They're perfectly commercially available. So I think we'd rather have a trail that's actually built instead of this pie-in-the-sky wide paved trail. So anyway, that's what I said, is first off, you shouldn't pay the city money for this at all. And if you do, you should, you know, let these two parties work out with CSX what that rail is really worth and see if they can make it work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweiger. Any questions for Mr. Schweiger? All right, thank you very much. In the back. In the back.
Welcome. Thank you. I'm Don Muir. I'm vice president of the Friends of the Northern Railroad Trail. Hopefully, you're all aware of the northern. It's a 59-mile trail that goes from Bosquin to downtown Lebanon, connecting 10 New Hampshire communities, and we hope Concord becomes the 11th. I'm happy to report that we're ready to connect. We recently completed projects last month where we installed new decking, or we installed decking on the northernmost bridge of the island, and we installed new surfaces on the north and south entrances of this bridge, so our trail users can ride from the Hannah Dustin Memorial to downtown Lebanon 59 miles away. It's my understanding, I could be wrong, but I believe the TARP grant that you have is dependent on connecting with the northern. We've done our part, and we're ready to connect. The Northern Railroad Trail is an important recreational asset for the state of New Hampshire. We have, again, 59 miles, and if you can bring the city Concord residents direct access to that trail, it's just going to enhance their lives as well. So a lot of benefits for your city residents. So in closing, I just strongly encourage the city council to vote and approve the authorization of the purchase of this land.
Thank you, Mr. Muir. Any questions for Mr. Muir? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good eve, uh, good evening. My name is Brennan Bork. I am a resident of Pennacook, and today I am coming to speak in support of the rail trail. It's quick. So a few weeks ago, a few Pennacook council members, they had some, they hosted a meeting, and some member, and council members listened to residents' concerns when it came to bikes on the road, whether that be e-bikes or bikes in generals. And today is the opportunity for our city to take the first steps in becoming a completely micro-mobile city with the funding. It will, and with this rail trail, we will unlock the potential for our city, connecting us to the rest of the state, the 59 miles throughout the rest of the rail trail. A family will soon be able to take a bike from Pennacook and will be able to ride into downtown Concord with this rail trail. And I believe this is a very important rail trail, not only for recreation and tourist opportunities, but also for people who might be using it to get to work, might be riding from Pennacook or from Bosquin to get to work in Concord. So many opportunities await with a rail trail, and I don't believe a city should allow these opportunities to be stifled by one single company. And I believe that unless the city is proposing they fund for the, fund the ties that stay and fund the whole section of the rail trail adjacent to them, I don't believe the city should be funding any, any bit to keep the rail trail. And we shouldn't be delaying this pro, um, project further than it already has for my entire adult life, this project has been talked about. And I think it's time that we finally get this project going. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Bork? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you, Brennan.
Welcome. Good evening. City council, mayor, city manager, and other city officials. I'm Rob Morrow. The Morrow family, we operate Morrow Farm in Pennacook and also the island on Horseshoe Pond. We own the property. One of the things, so essentially on both ends of what the city's talking about today. So I'm going to break up what I have. I have a few concerns, and I'm going to state, I'm not opposed to the trail itself. As Mr. LeBlanc mentioned, I think there needs to be more cooperation. I can say, if I've got here, scenic rail riders has been a great asset. I remember coming to the planning board meeting when they first proposed this, because as a butters, we were notified, you know, of it. What's this? How is this going to affect our business, our land? I spoke. I was asked at the time, are you for or against? And I remember coming up here to the, you know, microphone saying, "I don't know. I have some questions and concerns." Met Mr. LeBlanc that night. It's been an excellent relationship since day one. I believe he would say the same thing. From my standpoint, it has been tremendous. The rail bikes, one of the councils has mentioned this evening, they've been on it. I know of people from other states that have been on it because they says, we went through, we're one of the drawing cards for their business because of the scenery and what they say. I mean, to see it every day and the people, you know, and the joy that they've got, I don't really know why you want to go do all that, but anyway, to each his own. But the smiles and, you know, they were looking at the cattle. It's, it's just, it is. It would be a shame for the city of Concord to lose that. And as mentioned, and particularly up to the farm, I am old enough, have grown, lived there, you know, most of my life either there or at Horseshoe Pond. There was double tracks there. I remember two, you know, trains meeting each other right there. So there is a very large portion of that, you know, section they're talking about immediately. It's already a rail bed. So, you know, that, you know, they did misdrew that a little bit because it's there. Probably it's grown up a little bit, but your base is still there. So, you know, I just want to make sure the city council, I honestly think, we're together, folks. You've got two assets here. I do have, with this purchase, we have livestock. We have animals. My lifetime here, again, it's been a long time. The borderline fences, you may say, are literally up against this corridor. Even as recent as this afternoon, was there somebody that was out there? Because we, we already see the people using it. What do they do? They go over their padding, trying to. You know, they're talking, you know. One hand, it's kind of nice. On the other hand, there's safety issues, health concerns. In the late 1990s, early 2000s, I can't remember the date, there was a tremendous hoof-and-mouth disease outbreak in the United Kingdom. This country was on pins and needles. If that were to have come over, it would have been, this is the only way you do it. You eradicate the cattle and burn the farms. It's thousands of, you know, cattle, sheep, you know, bull lines were eradicated. That outbreak was caused, unfortunately, by human beings on trails such as this, interacting with livestock. I know people, it's, it's scary to hear, it's not comfortable, but that was the end result. What's the probability? It's probably not real great, but it's definitely there. It's a concern we have in the livestock industry of the interaction. So, you know, I've suggested, the Merrimack River people have said they've worked on this for 14 years. I spoke multiple times when they've walked it back several years ago, and I know there were counselors, both present and former counselors, that were on those walks at times. Spoke here four, five years ago when you made the Pan Am agreement, have spoken at other various meetings about this. Every time the city has says, asked them, you've got to work with your butters. You've got to work, you know, with us, with the concerns. I actually had a gentleman that's on the Conservation Commission after one of the times I spoke, met him somewhere, and he says, "I came down there and I saw your concerns. You do have some concerns that need to be addressed for this. But I'm here to tell you today, not once, because the people from the Merrimack River Trail Group contacted us about any of this. We have to act, we have three accesses, railroad crossings on this route. What's going to happen to that with the trails? You know, I mean, one of them, at least, is used multiple times a day. That's not working days. That's 365 days a year that we have to access that one of them to take care of cattle. You know, what is going to be, you know, the safety measures put in by these people on the trails? As I mentioned, I remember the trains running there. It was, and I'll say, literally beat into me, is you watch out for the trains. I, I, to this day, I'm coming up to those crossings. It's been many, many years since there's been a train. I'm still slowing down, looking both ways and double-checking because, is there a train coming? That's how much that was impressed when I was a young child. I mean, I remember when us kids first started driving, one of my father's rules were, we could drive up from the field. We were not allowed to cross the railroad tracks. One of the older adults that either worked for him or himself, somebody else, went across the railroad tracks. So, you know, for that portion, safety, but it's got to be addressed. You know, that. Horseshoe Pond, the highway of the homeless, you know, councilors have heard this. The open space, opening this up is going to create a bigger highway. We have the friendly kitchen right on that corridor. Councilor Todd, I mentioned to him, Pennacook's going to have a bigger problem with the homeless people because, no, they are not on the trails when the people are on the trails. They use that to be mobile. That's going to make it easier for them to go up. And where do they go? Well, currently, the first stop is our property on the north side, in, on the inside of Horseshoe Pond, that's wooded. Just this evening, I was, it was mentioned to me that I think we have campers again. If we do, that'll be either the third or fourth time this summer that we've had to get out. We had an incident, not only there, we live right there, 278 North Main Street, right on the corner of North, North Main Street and the old closed section going down to Commercial Street. Last week, there was an individual right in our yard walking across there. Homeless, and I was able to get a photo of it, picture. The police officer, as soon as she saw it, she was on her radio and said, "This is the person we've been looking for for a couple of weeks." So it's, when you live there and you deal with it every day, it's real. I think if we all work together, this would be good, but, you know, that's what it's going to be. We've got to work together, but... That, from the Horseshoe Pond end to the, you know, Bosquin Town Line, essentially, there are three landlords that own the majority of that property along there. City of Concord, state of New Hampshire, and my wife and I. And they're approximately all the equal amount, and it's, give or take, it's approximately 90% of the land that abuts it. The land that the railroad track goes through on our property on Horseshoe Pond is not owned by C X S. That is strictly an investment. We have one landlot on both sides. It literally goes through our property. So, and we have to access that. I don't know what the plans are, because, as I mentioned, they've spent thousands and thousands of dollars, but have they even had a discussion with, in a butter? Hasn't happened to our knowledge. So, you know, these are concerns that we have. I'd be more than glad to take any questions, you folks. I've talked with several councilors and the mayor and anybody that's out here over the years, and this almost feels like a repeat performance this evening, but I understand.
Any questions for Mr. Morrow? Counselor Seko.
Thank you, Mr. Morrow, for testifying here today, and thank you for enthusiastically stating your relationship with the business across the street. You talked about working together. What that partnership looked like to you?
You know, I guess, when you bring up concerns, and, and I remember sitting here five years ago, when we were all doing what we're doing tonight, this evening, how the city council directed, you know, their, their comments to the, to the group of people were, "You've got to work and address these concerns." They haven't stopped, uh, working on their plans, you know, to do this. You know, yes, maybe you slowed down, but, you know, if you have a discussion like that, I mean, is it signage? Is it fencing? Is it gating? Are they going to put signs up? I mean, when the scenic rail riders came in, you know, the tracks had essentially been abandoned, I'll use the word. They were like, okay, and they do have, we've got yield signs where our crossings. We have the right of way to cross. If they're coming up the rail or not, they have to stop. And the way that one particular crossing is, if you're coming up with a heavy load, you know, heavy-loaded equipment or whatnot, you're an uphill grade. So if all of a sudden you've got to stop right there, it's not a very safe situation. But also, they're on the flat and the level, and, you know, think about your roads and sometimes how they put the stop signs, you know? The flat and the level have to stop where the inclines get the right of way. You know, well, what are their plans there? You know? Last thing any of us would like to see, particularly myself, I mean, it could be myself, employees or family, is an accident. Just issues like that. Are they going to be liable if somebody's on that trail? And they create a situation like they had in the United Kingdom. God forbid us all here tonight if that ever happened. It would be devastating to the city of Concord. I mean, fortunately, I can say, we are the last dairy farm still operating within the city of Concord. We, you know, multi-generations, and I feel proud right now that the fourth generation, I mean, my wife and I are in the process, we're stepping back. Essentially, day-to-day is being done by the fourth generation. With the fifth generation, there's a part-time employee. So, I don't intend, it changes what we do, has changed over those 100-plus years. But I can definitely say, we're not, hopefully, we're not going away, but sometimes it's made, it's been made difficult, and sometimes that's not necessary. Especially if there's back and forth.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrow? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Gentleman back there, with a hat? Well.
Dear city council.
Please identify yourself.
My name is Matt LeBlanc. I am the oldest son of Carolina Perry. I'm a Plymouth State graduate. I helped build, create, fund, operate, and support scenic rail riders. I'm here to ask, could this purchase and sale be amended to include rail with trail? I believe that both Scenic Rail Riders and the MRGT can both coexist in this corridor. Those who disagree with this lack the firsthand knowledge, the creativity, and the vision to see how this would work. After reading through several hundred pages of public testimony, let's clear up some facts. Scenic Rail Riders is owned by Gary and Carolyn LeBlank, not some giant private equity firm or some massive corporation. We are the definition of mom and pop. We are a seasonal business, because who rides their bike in the middle of the winter when there's five feet of snow on the ground and sub-freezing temperatures? We employ over 15 people from the surrounding area who keep coming back to work for us year after year. So, just remember that you are taking away their jobs and future jobs from local high school and college kids when you say that we only benefit ourselves. And don't forget the numerous times we direct our customers to other local businesses to get breakfast, lunch, and dinner, or an ice cream after a warm day out on the trails. Gary spent two years researching and looking for locations to open, open Scenic Rail Riders. Places to operate rail bikes are far and few between. In January of 2019, we found this location and agreed to a lease with Pan Am Railways, a private company that owned the corridor. Just like a retail store leases its space from a building owner, we lease the tracks. We are not subsidized by taxpayer money. We paid for our parking lot, permits, track clearing, and operating costs out of our own pockets and from ticket sales. I personally helped clear the abandoned and overgrown 3.25 miles that we use and currently operate on, no longer abandoned. Again, paid for with sweat equity and our own yard tools. I have more hours than a weed whacker, hedge trimmer, and chainsaw that I can count. Scenic does not oppose there being a rail trail in this corridor, but you wouldn't know that because you never asked. You assume we're your enemy on this matter from the very start, that we wanted this whole corridor to all, to ourselves. This couldn't be further from the truth. If you had come to us and asked how we could both coexist here, we would have shown you our proposed ideas and solutions. But the thing is, you never asked. You never did your due diligence or asked to collaborate. You painted us as an enemy before we even opened our doors back in July of 2019. For those concerned with crossing the tracks, we have many ideas and solutions that would nearly eliminate the need to cross from side to side. We lack the vision to come up with those ideas, so hear us out. Talk and work with us so that this corridor can do both. Provide a free-use trail for locals to use while providing an opportunity for those who can't ride and don't own a traditional bike. Why can't we have both? Seems to work in other areas of the state and around the U.S. Why can't it work here? Let's talk about it, and instead of jumping to conclusions and actually go over the facts and solutions, rather than abandoning the idea altogether. For those excited to have this proposed trail, let's also remember that construction would not start for another four to five years, the earliest, and that funding has not yet been secured for this project. Wouldn't it be great to have a partner that could help provide stable funding for years to come in the form of a lease with Scenic Rail Riders? I think it would be best for the city council to hold off on signing the current purchase and sale agreement as it is written, until it can be amended to include keeping the rails in place. Let's work together as partners to have the best of both worlds. Scenic Rail Riders does not oppose the purchase of the corridor, just the terms of the current purchase and sale agreement and not keeping the rail in place. As written, I want to expect my, express my opposition to this purchase. Let's amend the terms, talk about collaborating on solutions, and then only proceed with this purchase. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Mr. LeBlank. Anybody have a question for Mr. LeBlank? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Mr. Sink.
Good evening, Mayor Boulay. Sorry.
I think, I think you wanted to direct that to Councilor Kirk's.
Old habits die young.
How much did he pay you for that?
Mayor Champlin, I, I do apologize, and members of the city council. For the record, my name is Tim Sink. I'm with the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce, and I am here to speak in support of the MRGT project and the city's investment in this. The chamber has been in support of this project for a long time now, actually, from the very beginning. And I don't need to explain why. I mean, the economic benefits are very clear. They've been articulated well before me. So, just here officially supporting this project. Having said that, I do need to do a shout-out to Scenic Rail Riders, have a proven track record of attracting visitors and generating a positive economic impact on this community. Full disclosure, Rail Riders is a member of the Chamber of Commerce. They have been for years. They have worked closely with the chamber in terms of partnering with us to provide their guests with information on shopping, on restaurants, on hotels. We do, we, we have a really good partnership with them in terms of helping promote Concord as a visitor destination, and making sure that visitors at Rail Riders take full advantage of what's available here. So, they, they do have a very positive economic impact, and we are very grateful for what they've been able to accomplish here. So, having said that, I, I know that there are significant challenges of trying to accommodate both the Greenwell Trail and Scenic Rail Riders, but I just would encourage that we exhaust a full investigation and understanding of anything that we can do to, to keep both of these amenities, because they are both amenities to the community. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak, and again, apologies to Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Sink. Any questions for Mr. Sink? All right, thank you, Mr. Sink.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome. Good to see you again.
Hi, nice to see you. This is really low.
Yes, they are.
I know. My name is Carolyn LeBlank, and I own, along with my husband Gary LeBlank, Scenic Rail Riders. We are located at 188 Sewell's Falls Road in Concord, and we've been in business in Concord since July of 2019. Some of you may not be aware of our small company and what we bring to Concord. We started with nothing and have become, over the last six years, a popular tourist attraction. Google us at scenic-railriders.com, bringing over 62,000 people to this great city, with a projected 10,000 more by the end of our season. Those 70,000 people who ride our rails at Concord, eat at Concord restaurants, stay in local hotels and Airbnbs, and spend money downtown, and they come back year after year to revisit our tour. We employ local people who have been very loyal to us and come back to work with us every season. We've been blessed with amazing employees. We built Scenic Rail Riders with our literal bare hands. We, as a family, hand-cleared with hand tools over three miles of track. A track that was completely overgrown for over 35 years of neglect. We, along with our three children, built the rail bikes by hand in our home garage. We had little to start, we had little startup money, but we had big ideas and a willingness to look hard, look, sorry, to work hard. We financed the build with our 401K money. No one subsidized us. No one subsidized us then. No one subsidized us now. We had a vision, our field of dreams. This was our, if you build it, they will come moment, and they have come. We felt we can make our dream come true and create a business for all abilities to use, use and enjoy. We have hosted families with children who most likely never get to ride a traditional bike. But with our rail bikes, they have that experience. We've hosted groups from the hearing and vision impaired, riding the rails safely with joy and wonder. We have hosted wedding parties, family reunions, and even a couple of wedding proposals. Older adults and families with young children ride rails because it's not difficult to pedal our bikes. We love our customers, and they love us. When we began Scenic Rail Riders, we were only the 11th rail bike business in the entire nation. We were a curiosity, something many had never seen or heard of before. Over the last six years, we have grown and built a five-star reputation. We have been featured on New Hampshire Chronicle, New England Living, New Hamp, New Hampshire Life, and Windows to the World, to the Wild, excuse me. All programs that give Scenic Rail Riders and Concord positive free publicity. We've also been published in countless newspapers and magazines. My plea to the council is to not destroy our successful family business. I could accept closing our business if we were failing at what we do, but we are not. We are very successful and a top search result for things to do in New Hampshire. The New Hampshire Tourism Board and Chamber of Commerce were just at Scenic Riders about two weeks ago. They were there taking pictures and video to promote the tourism in New Hampshire. Scenic Rail Riders is our only source of income. We will be devastated financially if you do not allow us to continue to keep our business in Concord. We are not the type of brick-and-mortar business that can just pull up and find another place to establish ourselves. Trust me when I say, we have looked, and there's little out there. In conclusion, we ask the council to be open to speak with Gary and me about working together so that we can both have a bike path and Scenic Rail Riders to coexist together. A bike path with our section of rails intact. We have proposed this multiple times, but no one has been willing to talk to us. We are just asking for a chance to explore this option and to work to keep a small business open. I believe that keeping business in Concord and supporting them is a big part of your job as city's councilors. Please think of the message you are sending to other businesses in Concord about your willingness to support them by effectively ending Scenic Rail Riders. We support Concord purchasing this rail corridor. We want the PNS to be amended to keep the rails intact and create a bike path alongside them, which will keep Scenic Rail Riders open and bring more tourism to Concord for years to come. I thank you for your time and hopefully interest in this matter.
Thank you, Ms. LeBlank. Any questions? Councilor Brown.
Yes. Can you talk a little bit about these rail, the rail bikes? You said you built them in your garage?
Oh, I wish I would ask my husband that. Yes, basically, we took aluminum, Gary, help! We just basically cut aluminum, and we made them into what is going to be our rail bike. Gary created a mold that we use, actually, a town in Laconia, I believe, that creates our tires, which are specially made to go on the rails, and they're very, very quiet. So, like, your neighbors aren't gonna hear us coming. You're not gonna hear that constant clickety-click. Our bikes are very sturdy, and my kids and my husband did it. I made cookies and made sure they were happy. Our, our, I don't, I can't sling a wrench. You know, we use bike parts. We call them bikes because we use bike parts. So, we use bike pedals. We use lawnmower seats. Those are our seats. I mean, we had, he, he, he's extremely creative. He will come up with a solution for any problem. He's our hero for this.
Can you tell me about how wide they are? How wide?
They're as wide as the rails.
As wide as the rails?
Yeah. So, we have our, when we call our bikes, we wear quads, and the quads are four-seat bikes. So, you have two people that sit in the front, two people sit in the back, the person on the right has the handbrake. They're just like your brakes that you would use for your bicycle to stop them. Our two-seat bikes are just side by side. So, riding our rails, you allow people to actually talk to each other while they're riding the tour. It's hands-free. They can take pictures, drink whatever they need, you know, water, sorry. Whatever they need to do, you know, to enjoy the rails.
Yes. How difficult would it be to retrofit the tires for, not the rails, but for a flat surface?
They would be, have to be brand-new rail, brand-new tires, different tires. These, these are not, how do I describe it? There's no suspension in these bikes, so you can't turn them. Not like a car, where you could just turn the wheel and the car will turn. These go straight. So, that's why it's so important that we have our, we, we line up our bikes when we cross the road. And they just, they're not meant, they're meant to hug the rails. They're not meant to drive on a road.
But they could work perfectly on a straight rail trail? If they were, if the, the pavement was, if it was paved and the rail and the wheels were not, I guess they're grooved for the rails? Is it something that they, you know, because the, the rest of it isn't changing. It's just the tires?
Correct, but...
There is no steering.
There is no steering. There is no steering.
The rails steer it?
Right. So, just like if you were at an amusement park and you drove those little cars that go on the rail, you pretend you're steering, but they're, they're on the rails. The rails is what keeps them on the track. The wheels are designed to keep on the track.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. LeBlank. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Daniel Day. I am a resident of Durham, and I am the owner of Awakening Rails LLC, a rail bike tour company that is looking to launch in Maine. I, just to clarify, I do not work for Scenic Rail Riders, nor have I worked for them in the past. I'm just wearing the shirt out of support for a fellow rail bike tour company. I can say, finding railroad lines is not an easy task. And I will say, Scenic Rail Riders is pretty much the gold standard when it comes to the scenic aspect of rail riding. You got forests, you got a river, you got a bridge, you got a cow pasture. A lot of rail bike tour companies in the country are jealous of the line that Gary lucked out in securing after two years. I've been trying, I've been going at this for three years, and I still haven't opened up yet. I've managed rail bike tour companies in Michigan and Oklahoma, and I have traveled the country checking out various other rail bike tour companies. Like I say, Scenic Rail Riders truly is world-class, and Concord is very lucky to have them. I will say, I, I would urge you to work with Gary and his family to try to see if the rail bike tour company and the rail trail can coexist. It definitely sounds like there's, there's a way to do it. I would encourage you to speak to them and work with the trail committee about how the two companies can coexist. I've been to Con Valley. It, I walked and skied along that corridor before. It works out very nicely over there. So, as my old saying goes, if there is a will, there is a way. Finally, I'll also mention that in terms of support for the economy, Scenic Rail Riders does list a lodging, dining, and other activities to do in Concord right on their website, so people checking out Scenic Rail Riders can see what else there is to do. And also, their website does post pictures of them building the business. So, you can see just all the hard work they put in to really bring this gift to Concord. And if you haven't been down there, check it out. See it for yourself. It really is a special place. I can say, as someone who has operated rail bike tours, it, it's very special for a lot of people who are very limited in the physical activity they can do. It's, it's a physical activity that so many people can do, and it promotes wellness, promotes sustainability, and environmental awareness. Definitely some values that I know Concord and the state of New Hampshire really hold dearly. So, thank you for considering.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Question?
Do you have any thoughts on why you think it's difficult, or why you've experienced a difficulty in finding a location to run your business?
Yes.
Or others? Why, why isn't, why aren't these everywhere?
So, um, there are very few railroads that are not currently being used by active railroads that are sitting idle. The few that are, many of them are being claimed by government organizations that are very bureaucratic. Some of them are in the hands of rail trail companies that, you know, they wanna use it for their own rails, the trails conversion. Some of them are operated in, are in territory of other freight railroads that don't wanna deal with another tenant that doesn't actively work with them. There's all kinds of concerns, so really, available unused rail lines are pretty rare. And also, they need to be in the right location. You need to have decent scenery. You need to be in a place where people either live or visit. So, in terms of finding what's actually a suitable rail line, they're very rare and very hard to come by.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, Mr. Day, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Welcome.
Good evening. My name's Chris Miller, East Concord. Avid cyclist, spent a lot of time on my bike. Spent a lot of time on trails around the country. You know, I think there's, there's an interesting bookend here. I think the most important thing I wanna speak to is, you've got the Northern Rail Trail Representative here, and you've got the Merrimack Greenway, and there is this opportunity to bridge this statewide connection ultimately. You know, I've ridden from Lebanon to its, you know, its current end in Askelon, and I witnessed people getting off there. I witnessed people getting off there who are coming down from Hanover, and it just comes to a sudden end out there, and they have to bushwhack their way into Concord if they want to do anything. And so it's an opportunity here. And I think this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to, to bridge that gap, to help build that, you know, truly remarkable statewide network. And so it's, it's not just about this 5.7 miles, it's about, you know, you know, bridging to some of the trails in Vermont, down to ultimately into Massachusetts. And, you know, there's this stark gap in this part of the state, and it helps fill that. The other thing, just, and this is the voice of experience, the paraphrasing, the comments about the Cotton Valley rail trail. I'm an avid cyclist, my wife is not. We did the Cotton Valley. Only one of us came out unscathed, and that was me, because I've got narrow tires, and it's hazardous. It's dangerous, because you're constantly crossing from one side, sometimes it's the middle, then, you know, the wide part might be on the right-hand side of the rail, and then it'll shift out there, and then it'll come back into the center, and then it'll... And so they spoke to, I think, the difficulty of building a sufficient platform for both of these uses to coexist. It's not just that there's an 84-foot right-of-way, you need to have a solid deck for that. The Cotton Valley is, if that's an example of a shared system, it does not work well. And I did it once, I'm never going back. So anyhow, I'm obviously very much in support of the city taking action to acquire and help develop this rail trail into the city of Concord. I think it's a remarkable economic development tool for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Councilor Grady Sexton.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for your testimony. So as a cyclist who uses these rail trails, do you often stop in a community and go to the downtown and spend money?
It's what, it's actually what it's all about. I mean, it's, if you, if you go to the Nashville River Rail Trail, you know, there's a series of stops. You go to Pep Roll, and there's, you know, the little restaurants and the ice cream stops. You go to Groton, and there's a, there are a couple of good lunch spots in Groton, and you can go down to, and it's, it's the way it is on all of these trails. I think, you know, people, you know, I know where the food stops are on the Northern Rail Trail heading up towards Lebanon, and it's, it's a feature of that activity. You know, I'm in my professional consulting life now, I'm working on a project up in Franklin at the old Daniel Webster Farm, and the Northern Rail Trail slices through the front of that site. And it's remarkable, the number of people who are coming down that rail trail, and they're, they're looking for places, looking for spots to get off on, they're looking for places to go find something to eat, something to drink. It's just the nature of, people are touring when they're on it.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Mr. Miller, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else like to testify? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello, my name's Livya Smith. I'm from Hillsboro, New Hampshire. I came to speak in behalf of Scenic Rail Riders. I had been employed by them for about six years now. This is my sixth season with them. I'm here because it would be, I didn't prepare anything because I wasn't sure if I was going to speak, but after working with them and them supporting me for the past six years, I thought it would only be fair and right that I support them as well. They have become a home away from home. I think it's incredibly rare to find a job that you enjoy with your whole spirit and life. I have three children at home who also require me to work, and yes, I could find another job, not one that may pay as well, or that doesn't support me in my schedule, and not only that, but being outside and my well-being. It has greatly increased my mental health and my, my physical health as well. So I can tell that we're, everybody here is getting a bit tired, and I myself am hungry. So I hope that a decision can be made in support of Scenic Rail Riders, whether that be in support of Rail with Trail. I do not know the specifics, I do not know numbers, I do not know any of that. All I know is that it is a livelihood to not just the owners, but to the others that work there as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody, any questions? Excuse me. Thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Aaron Frack Monroe. I live here in Concord and am an avid user of the current Northern Rail Trail and many other rail trails around the state. I'm up here hoping that you will approve the purchase of the segment of the CSX line, connecting 60 miles of trail up to the Rockwater and eventually down to Massachusetts. Like a gentleman a few people ago said, we have a gap here between Concord and probably the Manchester Airport. There's no trail through this, that very populous section. I think getting the trail allows a safer corridor for people who want to gain access to, from downtown up to the, the existing trailhead. I know I've ridden that rail trail quite a number of times, dozens and dozens of times. I ride up to Hanover for lunch a couple of times a year, up to Danbury for lunch a couple of times a year. So putting in some miles and frequenting local businesses. I think the Cotton Valley Rail Trail, I'll say what everyone else has said, that shared trail where you're crossing back and forth is, is very troublesome. I will read a comment that I posted, if I can find it. "When I rode that trail back in 2021, a lovely ride, but many railroad track crossings and places where the trail is laid between the rails made it tight and sketchy at times. I made it through. My significant other slipped and, and fell." So just be wary of a path that crosses and weaves on the trail. So, thank you very much.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council? My name is John Corrigan, and I'm a resident of Pennacook, New Hampshire. And by way of background, I am a retired program planner who spent 13 years at the New Hampshire Department of Transportation doing bicycle and pedestrian projects. I want to stress that I'm speaking strictly for myself, I have not been in touch with anybody from the department on this, okay? What I can do is urge, I fully support this program. I think it's a critical link, and I would urge you not to stop or to delay it. Towards the end of my career, I worked on the TAP program, and I'm very aware that the federal government pushes very hard to get these projects built as quickly as possible. And I will be the first to admit that these projects take way too long to make, but you don't want to build in more delays in it. And be aware that under the TAP, the federal government really does, if you delay it too long, they will pull your funding. It's ironic, because they built this system that's very complicated. I heard a reference earlier to looking for state funding for this program. What you should be aware of is that at least when I was working there, and I retired in 2020, that at the time, all of the bike ped money was passed through money from the Federal Highway Administration. The state spends almost no state money on these projects. Now, again, I'm a regular bicyclist, and I want, I think we need to look at this entire trail from, from Lebanon all the way to the southern part of the state with this critical link. We need to look at it as a transportation project and as a recreation project. I can tell you that I used to commute from Pennacook to the Department of Transportation on Hazen Drive all year round by bicycle. And had this trail existed then, I would be using it for transportation to work. What you need to realize is that most bicyclists are going to be out on the trail three or four times per week. And I think for either transportation or for, for recreation, $95 for a round trip, it's a very nice tourist adventure, but, you know, that's, that's not feasible for most of us to be using that on a regular basis. Again, I would urge you to, don't delay this anymore, get the work done, and, you know, really support the bicycling and pedestrian community in the state, and I think you'll reap the economic rewards from it. I've done quite a bit of biking in, on the Cape Cod Rail Trail, and almost every time you cross a road, there's a store or a restaurant, but the, the people are really taking advantage of it. I think the same thing can happen here in Concord, but we can't let one business block it. And I will defer to the, to the engineers about the practicality of Rail with Trail. Instantly, I've read the, I've ridden the Cotton, Cotton Valley Rail Trail in Wolfboro dozens of times. It is tricky, but it's not as dangerous as they claim. If you, if you pay attention to the signs, and there are lots of signs, you can navigate it safely, but it's not ideal. Just thought I'd add that. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Corrigan. Councilor Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I didn't know you already, I probably wouldn't ask this question. But do you think that it's a, a false choice to say that we have to pick one or the other?
I have to defer to the engineers on that. I mean, I think you do need, you need a certain amount of right-of-way, you need the space for, if you're going to have two different modes, you need space for both of them. So I, I don't know if it's practical or not. I do know that for the Cotton Valley Trail, it's, it's a complication. It's tricky. I've, I've seen friends get hurt there. I've always done well myself, but it's tricky.
Follow-up?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the way these things are funded, let's say hypothetically, in your experience, do you think that looking at a dual's choice, you know, of being able to meet both needs with the rail next to a trail, is that, would that delay?
Yes. You know, I'm not, I'm not current on all, all the administrative process going into this, but usually in the early, very early phases of the, the project, there is what they call a, an engineering study, which does consider alternatives. I don't know if that's practical at this point with this project or not, because you've had such long delays, and I'm afraid that if you have more delay to do that, that you're going to lose the grant. That's a very realistic possibility. I pulled a number of grants from, from local communities, and it broke my, but we just couldn't get them to move. Concord's ready to move. I mean, I've worked on projects here in Concord, and Concord's done a good job with them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Corrigan?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening. Andy Gold, Concord resident. Just a couple of things to say, in support of this project for sure, and the rail trail and this connection that it adds. Just being able to ride from downtown Concord up to Boscoon and beyond is, would be a huge asset to the city. There's no denying the success of rail trails around the state. You know, every Mother's Day, my family gets together, to all of us, and we pick a different rail trail and go out for breakfast. Economic, I mean, like everybody said previously, there's lots of money, lots of economic benefits to having a rail trail. The only thing that hasn't really been mentioned yet that I want to mention is when you're considering either the side-by-side option, just want to think about like 10 years down the road, 20 years down the road, if the rail riders business goes under, do we want to spend all of those extra hundreds of thousands of dollars on this project, and then that's not even there anymore? And we look back, we're like, oh, was it worth it? All that. I just want to consider the, the long, the long-term effect of, of our decisions, of your decisions on this project. Also, I'll echo what everybody said about Cotton Valley, it's definitely not safe to be between the tracks or zigzagging on the tracks. I've, I've also been there, so definitely don't recommend pavement or gravel between the rails, so that's it.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gold? All right, thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Welcome. Good evening. My name's Tim Chevalier. I have a business in Pennacook. I'm here to speak in support of the contract, a user of the rail trail. I've also used the Cotton Valley Trail, and I'm a mountain biker, so it wasn't a problem for me, but I wouldn't go back and haven't gone back. I was up recently in Freiburg, Maine, and right across the border from New Hampshire to Maine, there's a visitor center, and I rode this about a five-mile paved trail right next to the, next to the railroad. It's beautiful, it's very safe, and that's maybe an example of something that has worked that's fairly recent. Also, briefly to support the economic value, I'm right in Pennacook at the end of the trail. I've ridden to Franklin multiple times to get lunch. Never ridden downtown Concord, because there's no good route that's worth riding from, from Pennacook. I rode the Goffstown Rail Trail a couple of weeks ago with my sister. We found a farm at the end, we bought some blueberries for lunch. Would have not have found it otherwise, again, just more money for that farm. And she's in the market right now for a house in the Concord area, and we were talking about how the rail trail, you know, brings value when she's looking for a house. So I think it brings value, and it proves the value of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chevalier. Any questions before you leave? All right, thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, I'm Lisa Bowdoin, Word Four. I just wanted to lift up once again the concerns issued by the farmer. I really appreciated him raising serious questions about his ability to be able to access his fields, and hopefully neither the purchase and sales agreement, nor the design for the trails. However, however, all of that shakes out with regards to collaboration between trails and the scenic railroad bikes. However that shakes out, we don't want to lose, run over, or have some eminent domain. We don't want anything to happen to this farmer and his family and his livestock being able to have fair access to his two fields. So hopefully, the paperwork is in order to honor what has been around for 100 years. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Bowdoin? No, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening. Tim Blagden. I'm a part of the team that's building the other rail trail in town, and we wholeheartedly support the city moving forward with this project. Everything we're doing to build a 34-mile trail that will have a terminus in Concord, we really, really hope that connects with the Merrimack River Greenway Trail and gives people a way to start in Newberry and finish in Lebanon. At the end of the day, they are great for business today, myself, the person who is a leader at the Cross New Hampshire Adventure Trail. A couple of other folks rode from Lebanon down to Concord today. We did the whole thing, stopped at a couple of spots, spent money for lunch. It was a great ride, and we really hope that it continues down into Concord and links to what we hope to finish. So we're working as fast as we can, and let's get all this done.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Saw somebody else's hand up. Yes.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Summer Shiflett. I am employee of Scenic Rail Riders. I wasn't planning to speak, so I don't have any notes, but I just wanted to reiterate the important of this, importance of this business here and the effect it has had on so many lives. It is not just a recreational activity. It is a job we return to year after year, that people return to year after year. I also wanted to mention that if a family of five in 2019 could clear 3.5 miles of trail and build about 20 rail bikes in the garage, perhaps the city of Concord with all of its funding and resources...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Yes.
Hello. My name is Kayla Bowden. I am both a Concord resident and I work at Scenic Rail Riders. And I thoroughly enjoyed walking along the trails here in Concord as well. So I do try to take advantage of everything here in Concord. I've been with the business since 2021, if I want to say, like, 201? Yeah, it's about four years now. Big fan of it. And I think it'd be a big loss to the community to lose a business like it. I do see people come in every year, again and again to join. And I know a lot of people are talking about the price point, but people do typically split the price with multiple people. So it's not $95, like, usually all at once. Usually there's like a group of mostly older people, older people are this a lot, that split the price together. So they're all spending like $40 a person or so. So that's not all the time being spent by one person. I just wanted to point that out there, because there was a couple of comments about that as well. Oh, sorry, public speaking is not my thing. I'm also slightly concerned with the farm and what they're talking about with the homeless population, if someone could live in Concord. I do really want a trail for both biking and us as well. I thoroughly enjoy all the trails here in Concord. But I do see off all these trails, multiple homeless occupants. So I would be slightly afraid of what that would bring, because I actually do live near where you guys are talking about ending your suicide as well. Because I already do see a lot of homeless people on Fisherville Road that I drive by every day. So I do have a slight concern about the homeless population as well. They deserve a safe place to live, but I don't know if I want that safe place to live to be right along these trails. I think that's all I have to say today.
Well, thank you so much. Any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Saw some other hands up. Welcome.
This is low seat.
Yes, please, don't fall over.
Good afternoon. I was going to say good afternoon. Roland Barube, I'm a resident of Ward Five. I have always been in favor of the planned Merrimack River Greenway Trails, so when I came here tonight, I was all for the proposal and asking you to approve the proposals written. There have been some comments made by buy-in for the Scenic Rail Riders that have made me think that if you do decide, you, the council, do decide to amend the proposal to keep the track, the rails on the trail. I want you to, let's not forget that this is not just bike riders that we're talking about, or rail bike riders that we're talking about. We're talking about people in wheelchairs. We're talking about the Merrimack River Greenway Trail and the users of that type of trail. We're talking about people with mobility issues. We're talking about people that are either in wheelchairs or riding in, you know, mobility carts. We're talking about kids learning how to ride a bike, whether it's on a trainer bike, a bike with training wheels, a tricycle. We're talking about hikers. We're talking about walkers, like people my age that don't necessarily hike, we walk. We talk about people in the wintertime, cross-country skiers, snowshoers. So we need to remember that big picture of users that will be able to use this type of trail. I feel for the Scenic Rail Riders and the situation that they're in, but they did go, from what I understand, with what the planning board told them, they did go into this business venture knowing that the possibility of these rails going away was in their future. The plan for the Merrimack River Greenway Trail has been a concept that I've been hearing about for many years as a resident of Concord. I'm looking forward to this happening. I would love to see it happen sooner rather than later. In response to some of the prior people that have spoken, with regards to some of the comments that Mr. Swiker made, I would ask that he perhaps look into the why the Merrimack River Greenway Trail has not been completed in the 10 years since the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail have been working on it. There are things that, for one, they're not the landowners. Second of all, they have to deal with meeting the requirements of U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as far as the bridge work that's going to have to go, that would be going in to complete the Terrell Park portion of the rail trail. So to express disappointment that we're looking for a gold-plated solution, that's not what the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail are looking for. And again, I didn't mean to come here, I meant to come here tonight speaking as a resident. Full disclosure, I am a financial donor to the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. I'm also a former board member of the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. So I do know the hassles that they have had to deal with in trying to complete the portions that they've already completed. I also want to make clear to the people that are in this room that think that the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail are in control of this process, we are not. We are an organization, and I shouldn't say we, as I'm not a board member anymore, they are not an organization that are in control of this process. They are an organization that are set up to help the city or the state, whomever the landowners are that are going to give the ride away to the use of this trail. They are there to help assist in getting the grants and the funding to do the work to make this trail. In regards to Mr. Moore's comments, I fully agree with his concerns, and the reason why the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail have not talked to him yet is, again, we don't own the property. We, the organization does not have, we're not in the process yet of building that trail. Once we do get, you know, the approval for the land purchase and the approval of the city to begin working on developing the trail, then we will most certainly work with Mr. Moore to address his concerns and definitely work to make the trail safe for all the users. As far as the Scenic Rail Riders, same thing. The reason why they have not had discussion with the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trails is because the city is in the lead on this. We have to wait until the city determines what they're going to do with this ride away or the state, depending on which organization. It's not the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. We will just be the organization that will do all the work to raise the funds, to spend the money on the development of the trail and assist the city in getting the trail built. Again, the reason why I came up here tonight specifically was to make sure that we don't forget that this type of trail can be a recreational outlet for all types of people. And I would certainly love to see the residents of Concord be able to enjoy the same view along the river that the Scenic Rail Riders currently do, but not have to spend $95 to do it, as well as being stuck behind another rail car that you can't pass. I would much rather be able to either walk that trail, ski that trail. As a taxpayer, I would like to see my funds make it available to me so that I can walk that trail, ski that trail, take my grandkids there to learn how to bike in a safe environment. Or also, I know of people that would be using it as a commuting trail because of the sad inability to use Fisherville Road in a safe manner. I think that's all I wanted to say. Again, I did this without notes, but I also wanted to wait until I heard the majority of people and what they had to say, and I wanted to not necessarily counteract what they said, but just kind of bring to light where the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail sits in this whole process versus the city and/or the state with regards to the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Hi. Ian McGregor, Sunset Avenue, Ward Seven. I feel, I haven't been here the whole time, I'm a little late. I feel like we've heard a lot from people enjoying recreation. It is a beautiful corridor in a beautiful part of our town and a beautiful part of the United States. And I've heard it mentioned a little bit, but to me, this is like a crucial commuting corridor. The reason I'm late tonight is because I'm coming from a softball game that was at Bug Field. Bug Field is about a block away from Depot Street in Boscombe. We're a one-car family, so instead of being able to pick my kids up at NHDI and having a beautiful, enjoyable bike ride in our electric cargo bike up to the softball game, I had to, I, you know, picked them up, swung through McDonald's as fast as I could, and then went to the game, and then after the game, I have to go with my wife who works in Manchester. So we drove all the way down to Manchester through the traffic, because if anybody's not aware, they're paving 293 South in Manchester tonight. And then fortunately, she took over so I could turn this on my phone on YouTube and listen to some of the commentary that's been going on. And I just thought about how much more enjoyable, if this purchase would have gone through last year, I could have had a very different experience tonight. I've also thought about, I believe it's this Wednesday, you're having a ribbon cutting in Pennacook for the new park. Same scenario, I'm not taking my kids on Fisherville Road to go to that ribbon cutting. We're just going to go home that night and not go to the new ice cream place that just opened up this spring. My dog gets boarded at Brookwood. Brookwood Kennel is off of Old Boys Road, just on the other side of the new roundabout. Again, with a one-car family, when we're going on vacation, we've got to schedule, you know, who's going to take the kids to school and who's going to show up to work late and who's going to drop the dog off, where that would be made a lot easier for our little 40-pound dog to fit in the bike and be able to be dropped off. And then I can't not talk about Merchant's Way and the economic impact that that's going to have, and to be able to take traffic off of the freeway, to take traffic off of Fisherville Road and have anybody that's coming from the wealth of workforce housing and all of the new apartments that are being built in Concord, and be able to take a active mode of transportation into a new employment hub within the city is an opportunity that just doesn't exist in a lot of towns throughout the United States. And anything that would delay this, in my opinion, is something that should be avoided at all costs. So that's really what I came here to say tonight. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. McGregor. Any questions? Thank you so much. Anyone else like to testify? Come on up. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Kayla Bowden. I am both a Concord resident and I work at Scenic Rail Riders. And I thoroughly enjoyed walking along the trails here in Concord as well. So I do try to take advantage of everything here in Concord. I've been with the business since 2021, if I want to say, like, 201? Yeah, it's about four years now. Big fan of it. And I think it'd be a big loss to the community to lose a business like it. I do see people come in every year, again and again to join. And I know a lot of people are talking about the price point, but people do typically split the price with multiple people. So it's not $95, like, usually all at once. Usually there's like a group of mostly older people, older people are this a lot, that split the price together. So they're all spending like $40 a person or so. So that's not all the time being spent by one person. I just wanted to point that out there, because there was a couple of comments about that as well. Oh, sorry, public speaking is not my thing. I'm also slightly concerned with the farm and what they're talking about with the homeless population, if someone could live in Concord. I do really want a trail for both biking and us as well. I thoroughly enjoy all the trails here in Concord. But I do see off all these trails, multiple homeless occupants. So I would be slightly afraid of what that would bring, because I actually do live near where you guys are talking about ending your suicide as well. Because I already do see a lot of homeless people on Fisherville Road that I drive by every day. So I do have a slight concern about the homeless population as well. They deserve a safe place to live, but I don't know if I want that safe place to live to be right along these trails. I think that's all I have to say today.
Well, thank you so much. Any questions? All right, thank you so much. Thank you. Saw some other hands up. Welcome.
This is Lucy.
Yes, please, don't fall over.
Good afternoon. I was going to say good afternoon. Roland Barube, I'm a resident of Ward Five. I have always been in favor of the planned Merrimack River Greenway Trails, so when I came here tonight, I was all for the proposal and asking you to approve the proposals written. There have been some comments made by buy-in for the Scenic Rail Riders that have made me think that if you do decide, you, the council, do decide to amend the proposal to keep the track, the rails on the trail. I want you to, let's not forget that this is not just bike riders that we're talking about, or rail bike riders that we're talking about. We're talking about people in wheelchairs. We're talking about the Merrimack River Greenway Trail and the users of that type of trail. We're talking about people with mobility issues. We're talking about people that are either in wheelchairs or riding in, you know, mobility carts. We're talking about kids learning how to ride a bike, whether it's on a trainer bike, a bike with training wheels, a tricycle. We're talking about hikers. We're talking about walkers, like people my age that don't necessarily hike, we walk. We talk about people in the wintertime, cross-country skiers, snowshoers. So we need to remember that big picture of users that will be able to use this type of trail. I feel for the Scenic Rail Riders and the situation that they're in, but they did go, from what I understand, with what the planning board told them, they did go into this business venture knowing that the possibility of these rails going away was in their future. The plan for the Merrimack River Greenway Trail has been a concept that I've been hearing about for many years as a resident of Concord. I'm looking forward to this happening. I would love to see it happen sooner rather than later. In response to some of the prior people that have spoken, with regards to some of the comments that Mr. Swiker made, I would ask that he perhaps look into the why the Merrimack River Greenway Trail has not been completed in the 10 years since the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail have been working on it. There are things that, for one, they're not the landowners. Second of all, they have to deal with meeting the requirements of U.S. Army Corps of Engineers as far as the bridge work that's going to have to go, that would be going in to complete the Terrell Park portion of the rail trail. So to express disappointment that we're looking for a gold-plated solution, that's not what the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail are looking for. And again, I didn't mean to come here, I meant to come here tonight speaking as a resident. Full disclosure, I am a financial donor to the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. I'm also a former board member of the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. So I do know the hassles that they have had to deal with in trying to complete the portions that they've already completed. I also want to make clear to the people that are in this room that think that the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail are in control of this process. We are not. We are an organization, and I shouldn't say we, as I'm not a board member anymore, they are not an organization that are in control of this process. They are an organization that are set up to help the city or the state, whomever the landowners are that are going to give the ride away to the use of this trail. They are there to help assist in getting the grants and the funding to do the work to make this trail. In regards to Mr. Moore's comments, I fully agree with his concerns, and the reason why the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail have not talked to him yet is, again, we don't own the property. We, the organization does not have, we're not in the process yet of building that trail. Once we do get, you know, the approval for the land purchase and the approval of the city to begin working on developing the trail, then we will most certainly work with Mr. Moore to address his concerns and definitely work to make the trail safe for all the users. As far as the Scenic Rail Riders, same thing. The reason why they have not had discussion with the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trails is because the city is in the lead on this. We have to wait until the city determines what they're going to do with this ride away or the state, depending on which organization. It's not the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. We will just be the organization that will do all the work to raise the funds, to spend the money on the development of the trail and assist the city in getting the trail built. Again, the reason why I came up here tonight specifically was to make sure that we don't forget that this type of trail can be a recreational outlet for all types of people. And I would certainly love to see the residents of Concord be able to enjoy the same view along the river that the Scenic Rail Riders currently do, but not have to spend $95 to do it, as well as being stuck beside, behind another rail car that you can't pass. I would much rather be able to either walk that trail, ski that trail. As a taxpayer, I would like to see my funds make it available to me so that I can walk that trail, ski that trail, take my grandkids there to learn how to bike in a safe environment. Or also, I know of people that would be using it as a commuting trail because of the sad inability to use Fisherville Road in a safe manner. I think that's all I wanted to say. Again, I did this without notes, but I also wanted to wait until I heard the majority of people and what they had to say, and I wanted to not necessarily counteract what they said, but just kind of bring to light where the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail sits in this whole process versus the city and/or the state with regards to the purchase. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Pete Minor, in East Concord. I'm here tonight with my son for Ameripad, of all things.
He definitely deserves it.
Say it's not a bad thing.
the livestock in the UK because of too much environmental, environmental, like interception, per se. And they, the animals were suffering because they couldn't really, they were just dying and suffering because of the germs and all of the interaction, which leads me back to the cost, because for the care of the animals, again, costs more, and that's a low price, but if it does, that's a low percentage. But if that does end up happening, that could cost a lot, because that's viral, so it will go around all over through the state and eventually to the country. And I don't think we would like seeing that to our whole country of all our livestock just dying. And then, I did the math, the 31 negative results of the 40 people, that's 77.5% of the people did not like what, did not like what was going to happen to the, or had problems with the trail system, which I would say, it's better to have a safer system, which I see has not been happening, than 10 more people hurt in a more expensive, fancier way. That is it.
Mr. Minor, thank you so much for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like a task or question of Mr. Minor? Counselor Kurtz.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, what grade are you in?
I am going to eighth.
And follow-up, Ms. Moore.
Follow-up.
And have you spoken in front of a group of people, a council like this, before?
No.
I would just like to commend you. It's very intimidating. You spoke very well, and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you. Which Ameribad are you working on?
I'm working on my Communication Ameribad.
Excellent job. Excellent preparation. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Would anyone else like to testify? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Welcome. My name's Steve Tooney. I've lived in Concord for over 20 years. I think the length of this meeting is maybe a metaphor for this project, which has taken forever. And I just would love to just encourage the sort of expeditious manner of handling this and not to delay the purchase of this. I've ridden rail trails my whole life here in Concord, and I've ridden the length of the Northern Rail Trail. It's absolutely delightful. My wife and I have ridden the Gap Trail, which is a 330-mile ride from Pittsburgh all the way to Washington DC. And there is a whole community, and there's a very vibrant economic benefit that's being derived by many of the communities that line the rail trail. So, I just, also, I think we could reduce our carbon footprint by making it a little warmer in here. I don't know about you. I'm frozen.
I agree. Thank you.
I just thought of throw that out there, anyway. And that's all I really have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tooney?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Any more testimony? Any more testimony? All right, seeing now, I'm going to declare this public hearing over. At the hazard of giving everyone in suspense, we've been here for three hours, I'm going to declare a five-minute recess before we go into the action phase. We're recessed for five minutes. The public hearing action phase of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, item 37.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Building and Housing Codes, Building Regulations, Demolition Review.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval is moved and seconded. Any discussion? Counselor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. On behalf of the Heritage Commission and Counselor Todd, we thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, that we were missing something in the language, and the Heritage Commission fully supports this.
Any further discussion? Question, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those no? Ayes have it. The motion carries. Madam City Clerk, item number 38.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title 4, Zoning Code, Chapter 28, zoning ordinance, nonconforming lots, uses and structures, determination of a nonconformity.
Move approval.
Second.
Approval is moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, as may, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Ayes have it. Madam City Clerk, item number 39.
An ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances Title 2, Traffic Code, Chapter 18, Parking, Stopping Standing in Parking, Parking Prohibited during certain hours and months in designated places, Modifying Parking Requirements on School Street Between Pine and Liberty Streets.
Chair recognizes Counselor McNamara.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to, I was on the parking committee, and we did discuss and go through a compromise after a second motion that we had. And I would like to move to drop this item until such time when a comprehensive discussion can be had between representatives from Concord School District and our parking staff and city.
Are you moving to table, counsel? Is that what you're moving?
Do you think that'd be the best action to do, if we're looking to have a conversation?
If you, if you want, if you want to delay action on it?
All right. Then I'm moving to table this until we can have a comprehensive discussion with Concord Participant School Board, Parking Committee, and some city staff.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded, okay. Would I speak to that any further?
Certainly, thank you. So, there's been lots of conversations. At our last meeting, we made a motion to change the, it consists of the current parking on both sides of the streets. There were two residents who were at that meeting. One was in favor, one wasn't. So, I proposed a compromise that we would only change back one side of the street. We agreed on this, and with, over time, thinking about this, thinking about it objectively, there are several things that come to mind. We are taking away parking from current students and possibly teachers, which they still have to park, so they will move and find another place to do so. I know that with the restructuring of Memorial Field, we've been told that that's going to take away some parking, so that's less parking for our students and possibly teachers. Also, we are going to be doing the renovation of the Coach property that's going to possibly take away parking at the senior parking for Concord High. There was a concern about, well, this is very dangerous, having cars parked close to my driveway. So, we went ahead to find that data, and there wasn't any. Concord PD didn't have any data showing accidents during that time. We keep saying in our meetings, and we've done this to residents on Union Street, we've done this at law school, we don't make changes for just one or two people, because we're a community. And the fact that this change would affect others, I just think at this point, and we've constantly been saying, we'd like to speak to someone from Concord, Concord High School. We had one meeting set up, that did not happen, and I've been assured that this will happen, so I have faith that we can have a meeting, and we will have someone from Concord High, and we can talk collaboratively on this and move forward that way.
All right, any further discussion, Counselors?
Yes, I would like to speak to this. I'm also on the parking committee, and this is also my ward, and maybe there haven't been any accidents, but there have certainly been issues. And I've heard from multiple residents on both sides of the street, because there is parking on both sides of the street. And there have been issues where driveways have been blocked, they have not had their garbage picked up. These are high school students running late. If you look at the map, that is on, that is the seventh page of this packet, you can see that all the streets in blue, there's limited, there's restricted parking on all of those, this one street. And it was one resident who came to the parking committee in 2020 that said, "I want more parking for my tenants." And the staff advised against it. The staff said, "If you do this, these students will flock to the area." And that's exactly what happened. So, one resident came in, and the parking committee made that change, or the council then approved that, and I know Counselor Fennessy and Counselor Keach opposed it, because Counselor Fennessy lives in the area and recognizes how bad the parking can be. We need to encourage students to move further towards Memorial Field, to use Memorial Field. There is more, there are more students driving. The issue that we have had with Concord High is they're not coming to the meetings. And I have had multiple email conversations, I've reached out to the principal, I have alerted him to this meeting, to, I've alerted school board members to this meeting. So, there has been ample opportunity for the school district to come and meet with us. That has not happened. These are residents that are dealing with it regularly, and there was a great compromise that was made at the meeting. And this meeting, the residents have been complaining almost ever since it happened, because they were not alerted to the change. The change happened, the signs were removed, there was only two-hour parking at the time. One person made a request, the change happened, and the entire neighborhood was impacted. I have been hearing from it constantly for years, every time, the snowplows cannot maneuver around the plows, they cannot maneuver around the students' cars to get into the driveways to plow the driveways that they've been contracted to do. So, I think tabling this would be a mistake. The neighbors have reached out, they have attended meetings to the parking committee. I had them ask me tonight, "Do you think we need to come?" And I said, "You know, I think it's going to be a long, late night because of other issues that are happening." And I feel that at our parking committee, we discussed, hey, we've reached out to the schools, and they have not extended a hand to us. The high school is also part of my ward, so I want to work with them, and I alert them to what's happening. But we cannot prevent this, we can't hold this for them. I have also worked with them on a parking area closer to the CRTC. So, that's something that I'm trying to work with them to support the residents who are in this area. If you look at this map, it's crazy. The students are going where there's an opening. I mean, we would have to look at all these other streets. The residents themselves came up with this compromise. And in fact, the resident, the husband, came before our parking committee and said, "Yeah, we were wrong. We should not have done that, because it's terrible. So, let's restrict it on one side and then leave the other one open for parking." So, it's not even going back to what it was. This is a compromise. And I am working with the school district to help them find parking, to resolve those issues. But to make the residents wait for them to come to the table is a mistake.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you. As the report notes, I was one of the two people who opposed making this change back in 2020. I think the council made a mistake at the time to allow parking in this area. I said at the time, "If you remove parking here, it's just going to get filled up with high school student parking." I think that's exactly what's happened. So, personally, I, you know, I drive down School Street every single day, and in the winter, you can barely get one car through this particular section when you have parking on both sides with two mountains of snow. It leads to backups at the Liberty Street, School Street intersection, which there's already backups with that, usually with the traffic circle, which is undersized. So, I do think there's something that should be done. Ideally, we would do it before the school year starts so that students don't get used to parking in this area. So, I don't have a personal opinion whether it should be the south side or the north side of the street. I don't know if, to what extent, the parking committee talked about one side versus the other. Personally, I don't know that it matters, but if it were my choice, we'd go back to how it was before, there'd be no parking at all. But, you know, if there's a reasonable compromise to have one side of the street be parking versus another, you know, maybe that provides a temporary measure of relief.
Any further discussion? Counselor McNamara.
That was part of the conversation and the compromise. The family who felt like cars were coming up to their driveway wanted, there's no parking. And the one across the street would have the other, because he wanted his kids to have a place to park during the day. So, my concern is, again, I recognize when people are frustrated, but I also recognize, do we make changes for one or two? Or do we look, go a little farther out, and then maybe go a little farther out and ask, are there people who need to come to the table so we can have a bigger conversation? So, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I will say that it was the, it was residents, and it was more than one resident that came, and they discussed it themselves. And they said, "Okay, which side?" And they said, "All right, the north side would be better." And they both, one family would prefer to go back the way it was, because there are so many more students. And if you look at that map, you know, it's not equitable. It is this one street, this one block that gets clogged. But they came up with the compromise. They said, rather than block it all, block it off on both sides, they would like to have their kids park, so we'll have the south side. That was something that they determined. And it was, I have to say, the parking committee, I want to commend Counselor Todd, he did a great job. We recognized how many times and staff had reached out to the high school or to the school depart, or school district constantly and had no response. So, I feel like we have done our due diligence. We are here to serve the residents, to resolve issues, and this was something, this is a long time coming. And I would ask that folks approve this as it is written, and let's move forward.
Any further discussion? Counselor Todd?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. So, if you look at the minutes of the EDAC meeting, the... that's in our packet tonight, there's a reference in there to the Concord High School's CRTC program and how it's at capacity, and that one of the problems that they're facing is parking for students. So, this is an issue that's really a larger-scale issue. I think it, just that alone, it certainly would say it behooves the Concord School District folks to come to the table and have some discussions and further take this up. I think that, I've always been open to doing that, and I know that city staff has tried to reach out on occasions and get ahold of them and try to have them involved in the meeting. So, that's sort of one example that I would kind of be able to promote, to say, yeah, I think you have some issues. We know that they're there. And the cities have some issues and residents have issues. So, I would like to take this up further. I kind of viewed the decision that was made at the parking committee as a compromise that at least would take care of this problem while we go about doing that other work. So, I think that although there were no accidents, one part that kind of concerned me, there was, there was some testimony that was given that on occasion, students parked in front of driveways. So, I would just be concerned that if there was a medical emergency in that house, what would happen? Would there be an issue or a problem with the fact that emergency services might not as readily be able to access that property and get to those folks? So, you know, I kind of just viewed this as a temporary way, a compromise, as it was mentioned, to be able to come to a resolution for this particular block. And really, it's just, we're just talking about one block right now. But there's a whole other, larger area that I think really does need and warrant discussion. And I think the parking committee is certainly ready to take that on. I think city staff would certainly be willing to assist with that. We just need to be able to kind of move that forward. I think that the, that could be a very time-consuming project. As Your Honor will remember, with the narrow streets project, that took many, many months to be able to get everyone to have the input. And we would certainly want to do that in this case. We wouldn't be talking about just one block. We'd want to really expand this as large as we can to that whole general area and get all the feedback that we could, including especially feedback from Concord School District. So, you know, it'd be the will of the council tonight, but I was satisfied, I'll say, with the outcome that the parking committee had. And again, still willing to take on the larger-scale issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretavec?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to support the item to be tabled. It was interesting because I was actually attending the meeting this, that night for the parking committee because I had an item that was on referral, though not speaking to it, simply to listen to the conversation. And as Counselor McNamara pointed out, there was a couple that had come and spoken about removing on-street parking on Union Street. And they were told, one family, I'd, they were requested in Counselor McNamara's ward, by Counselor McNamara, could you bring more people from the neighborhood or have them write to us and give us some feedback? And the couple came and spoke, but it was only the couple that came and spoke. And so, the item was set aside, and it was not approved, because only one family had come to speak. And I think in this case, when we are talking about a specific block, it's almost like there was something, a different set of rules that were set up for this block as opposed to what was on Union Street. And I think that if we're going to ask people for input, that we should ask neighbors to provide input and not make decisions based on such a small number of people. Thank you.
That's a second.
Thank you, Your Honor. So, I think my question will be for Counselor Todd. During your conversation, you have not mentioned anything related to safety. Am I correct? You don't have any safety concern?
You may reply.
Thank you. Well, I don't, I don't know that there were any reported accidents, for example. I think that that's the information that we got, no accidents, right? I was just sort of picking out a hypothetical, that doesn't mean that there couldn't potentially be some kind of a hazardous, let's say, situation created under the right circumstances. I'm not guaranteeing that that's going to happen.
Thank you, Your Honor. For a follow-up.
No wish.
My understanding is that we don't have enough or educated information to make the decision tonight, because you guys felt there is a missing part in the conversation. Am I correct?
Well, I think that it's just going to depend on how you look at it. I think that the recommendation from the parking committee, which was unanimous vote, was to come up with this, as it's been described, kind of compromise agreement, so that instead of, you'd have basically, you know, restricted parking on one side and open parking on the other side of the street. And so, I think that at least the residents that attended, it seemed to satisfy those folks. We didn't have 20 or 30 people there. I think there's not 20 or 30 houses on this one block. So, we did have some folks, though, that provided testimony, and I think this was a good compromise. So, that solves that part. So, really, what you'd be doing is basically telling those folks, well, you're going to have to wait longer until we have, we're able to get the whole package together to make a full decision. We can do that. I mean, it's, again, it's just, you're telling a certain group of people on this one block that they'll have to wait longer. That's all it comes down to.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yes, so I would just like to address Counselor Kretavec's comments. She was there, and actually, at that meeting, I was concerned, because this couple came and spoke first. It was not a referral through council. Counselor Kretavec wasn't, her issue was not a referral through council. The residents that spoke about this issue have, this was referred through council. This has been years that they have been speaking. The couple that spoke first on Union Street, that was the first time they had ever come before the parking committee. And they were even shocked. They were like, wow, I can't believe we get to speak, you know, we get to be first. And the meeting ended up going, you know, two hours late, I had to leave. But this, that couple, that was the first time they had ever come before the parking committee. It did not come through the council. This issue has been before the council multiple times, and it's been years. And I think it would be a mistake to delay this even longer, because we have had mult, we've had emails, we've had multiple photos. I have gone out there to speak with residents on both sides. This is one block. And I appreciate Counselor Todd wanting to look at the larger issue after. Let's resolve this one block, and I am absolutely happy to do the legwork necessary to work with Concord High, because there is a huge parking lot right across the street from CRTC. And I would love the city's support in working with that owner to provide that parking, because it's vacant, too, most of the day. I think that would be the ideal spot, and I would like to put our efforts behind that, rather than slowing something down for a community that has told us they have an issue with this.
Counselor Horn?
Take all the questions, please.
The, move the question?
Yes, sorry.
Question, question has been moved. That requires a roll call vote.
It requires a second.
Second.
I'm sorry, it does require a second.
Second.
Thank you. Requires a roll call vote.
And then it requires a two-thirds vote to be moved.
Counselor, I'm aware of the rules. Thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to elucidate? Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk?
Roll call vote.
Make it clear, so.
Clarification. Is this a roll call to move the question?
This is a roll call to move the question. This is not a vote on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Herr.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Mayor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Foot?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Horn?
Yes.
Counselor Kretavec?
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor McNamara?
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser?
Yes.
Counselor Seku?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Unanimous. The motion, the question is moved. The question before us is whether or not to table item 39 until such time as the school board, the school district, can be involved in a conversation about overall parking, I believe, is the, is the motion? So, the question is to table this. If you're in favor of tabling this, you would vote yes. If you're in fa, not in favor of tabling this item, the vote, your vote would be no.
Roll call.
A roll call has been requested.
Counselor Brown?
No.
Mayor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
No.
Counselor Foot?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Horn?
No.
Counselor Kretavec?
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz?
Yes.
Counselor McGlaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor McNamara?
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser?
No.
Counselor Schultz?
No.
Counselor Seku?
Yes.
And Counselor Todd?
No.
It is eight, two, two, three, four, five, six. So, it does pass.
The motion has passed. Madam City Clerk, item 40.
It is a resolution appropriating the sum of $90,000 in the water plant improvements project to replace a failed boiler and authorizing the issuance of water, general obligation bonds and notes in the sum of $90,000 for this purpose.
Move approval. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. The motion passes by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk, item number 41.
It's a resolution appropriating the sum of $14,000 for human services assistance and accepting a donation in the sum of $14,000 from the trustees of the Protestant Episcopal Church of New Hampshire for this purpose.
Move approval.
Moved and seconded. Any, any discussion? All those in favor of the mo, sorry, I'm sorry.
I just want to say thank you to the Episcopal Church for this donation.
Yes.
Indeed. Thank you. Any further discussion? Although, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. The motion passes. Madam City Clerk, item 42.
It is a resolution retroactively appropriating the sum of $27,500 as a transfer to the highway reserve and accepting the sum of $27,500 from Shaw's supermarkets for this purpose.
Move approval. Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it. Madam City Clerk, item 43.
It is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase and sale agreement with the Boston and Maine Corporation, CSX Transportation, concerning the acquisition of portions of the Boston and Maine Northern Maine Line Railroad for the purpose of facilitating the Merrimack River Greenway Trail Project, appropriating the sum of $143,000 in the Merrimack River Greenway Trail Project, authorizing the issuance of general obligation bonds and notes, and the sum of $105,000, and authorizing the transfer and use of $38,000 from the recreational impact fee fund for this purpose.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. The chair recognizes Counselor Fennessy.
Thank you. I just want to say I'll be recusing myself on this item because subsidiary of the firm that I work for represents CSX.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Horn?
I'm very much for the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. I think it's pertinent that we continue the trail system through the city. But I also implore the stress valve and the city staff to please have a conversation with the scenic rail riders. I think they've been a member in good standing of this community. They've employed people, they helped get us through COVID and be able to get outside. We've heard prominent members of the community and Mr. Sink and Mr. Morrell talk about how important it is to try to work with them, and I really agree with that. They have met our goals for city council and economic development. Like they said, they bring in tens of thousands of people, they bring in money. And I really just want to try to speak to them to see if there's any way that we can work with them.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schultz?
So, the decision today isn't one group or another, or both, or neither. It's the purchase of this, correct?
The vote is on authorizing the city manager to move forward with the purchase and sale agreement that was included in your packet.
So, we can decide yes on that and continue, as Counselor Horn suggested, on the other conversations as we move forward from there?
I think that part of the question is that the purchase and sale agreement does require the, or does provide for the removal of the rails. Any further discussion? Counselor Kretavec?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Beckos has been waiting patiently to hear about the National Trail System Act of 1983, which was a national initiative to get people outside and reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which oddly enough, we started the council meeting having a discussion about greenhouse gases in our city. There has been one corporate sponsor most supportive of that act, and it's CSX Railline. And the other rail line that hadn't been participating was Pan Am. And it wasn't until Pan Am knew that they were going to be selling this line, that all of a sudden, they started having these conversations with us regarding the Merrimack River Greenway Trail. All that to say that this is a long time in the works, beyond the conversation that we've had talking about 2014, et cetera. Concord 2020, one of the last objectives that they did was to put together the feasibility study to see if the Merrimack River Greenway Trail from the Bowtown Line to Bosquen was even possible. The biggest hurdle that we had was not this. The biggest hurdle was that stretch of wetlands between, along the river, between Manchester Street and Logan Road. And when New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services said yes, that sealed the deal, that this was actually something that was real and true and could happen. From that point in time is when residents in our city put together the Friends of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail, and they started their efforts. Their biggest hope was to get that first two-mile stretch. This opportunity came along, and I think that we, as a community, want to continue that commitment, understanding that there are concerns about the scenic rail riders. I hope that we could work with them until we own it. There really isn't a conversation, which is why I'm supporting this motion. And I hope that if there's a conversation, it can happen quickly, and it doesn't delay this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Counselor Kurtz?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to echo Counselor Horn and Counselor Kretavec in saying that I think as a city, it's extremely important for us to have dialogue with business owners who have thrown in their personal stake to make something special happen in the city of Concord. I will support moving forward on the purchase and sale because of the length of time that we have been working as a city to secure the MRGT. But I do it with a heavy heart at the thought of not being able to keep scenic rail riders in business. So, I implore city staff to work with them at the earliest possible convenience to see if there is any way that we can coexist, respecting the engineers and prioritizing concerns for safety and a functional rail trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. I echo Counselor Kurtz's remarks. That sums up my feelings. I would just add that the benefits to Penacook from this trail, when it's completed, I think will be tremendous. We're, the connectivity that will be, and I think we heard some testimony from that tonight, and also in our, the written testimony received, will be really, I think, a great boon to folks living in Penacook and those who want to travel for multi-purposes, could be commuting, it could be. And in fact, you know, when we're looking at the news reports recently, there are a lot of younger folks who don't want to get driver's licenses, who don't want to have to buy, you don't have to do it in New Hampshire, but in other states, you have to have mandatory insurance. And then you have the cost of the vehicle, they can't afford it, and they don't want to afford it, and they want other options. This plan, I think, is a forward-thinking plan, which the city, I think, has been so good at in a number of ways. This is, this is another example of that. We're really looking toward what are the needs of the future generations. So, I think that those are key reasons that I would not want to delay this project any longer, and I'll be supporting it tonight. Excuse me, I would also, I'm curious, though, also about the discussion about the costs of the rail, the value of the rail, the fact that that's been incorporated in this deal. And I would think that there should be more information provided as we go along as to what exactly that value is and why that's been incorporated in this deal. what exactly that value is and why that's been incorporated in this deal. I can only imagine that it's to CSX's advantage to be able to have that rail pulled up and reuse it in some fashion. I would assume that that value would need to be reincorporated into any new deal or amendment to a deal that we might want to take up. But I would look at it that way. I would look at it to have us approve this tonight and then look at a potential amendment, if there's one that's feasible, and really have an outline of what those costs would be. We hear a lot of times that folks don't particularly look fondly on the city to pay for private development. And so that would be my concern. But if scenic rail riders are willing to foot some of the cost for whatever those costs might be, then maybe we can reach some kind of an agreement if, in fact, there are additional hard costs that would need to be included in a new deal. So I'll definitely be supporting this terrific project for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brady Sexton?
Thank you, Your Honor. I won't repeat the excellent comments made by my fellow counselors, but I do want to thank everyone who came tonight and shared their perspective and stayed till ten-thirty. It's really wonderful to see this level of civic participation. So thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown?
Yes, I had been a member of the Merrimack River Greenway Trail for three years, from 2013 to 2016, wore a neon green suit as the mascot, the Greenway Girl, did parades, market days, and it was exhausting, the thought of fundraising for all this. I am an enthusiastic supporter of this. However, I have gone out to the scenic rail riders today. I thought the testimony was fantastic. But what I'm hearing more is I'm hearing their ingenuity. I'm hearing their dedication. I'm hearing about their loyal customers and their employees. And I feel like their business is not just for rails. I would love to see, and I would love to personally work with you to find a way for your business to be a different type of business, successful in Concord, because you give so much, you have given so much to Concord. But I do not support a rail and trail. I absolutely will. I'm happy to come and meet with you and work with you to identify a way for you to have a business that is successful, taking advantage of the rail trail that is so critical for economic development. I would like to offer an amendment that we use economic development reserves instead of general obligation bonds in the sum of one hundred and five thousand. In January, we approved three hundred thousand dollars to be transferred to the economic development reserves. And as of June 2024, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty was there. So I believe that there is enough, we would get the report next month, but I believe that there is enough for the one hundred and five thousand dollars that's in this report to come, that is slated to come from general obligation bonds. I would prefer, and I'm making a motion, that that instead come from economic development reserves.
Do a second. Hearing second, no second, the motion fails. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Counselor Seku?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I am going to second what everybody said here, my fellow counselors, and I think I want also to express my sincere gratitude for everyone who showed up today to share, and we can see the dedication, the hard work that went through all of this. And I am also aware of running a business and how important it is to attract people here to Concord as the capital city. I think it's very important for the city to consult them, to work with them, and see if there is any feasibility in working with them on this regard. And as they said, they are not opposing the purchase of this or the rail—I'm talking about the scenic railroads, rail riders, I'm sorry. So I think I'm going to be supporting this as well, but I think there is always a great opportunity to listen and hear what people have to say and see, explore if there is a partnership there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Schlosser?
Yes, I'd just like, I'm going to support this resolution, but I would just like to commit to Mr. Morrell that both Merrimack Valley Greenway folks and the city will work with him to ensure that his farm and his farm animals are safe and sound. And I'm sure that accommodation can be made. I've ridden the scenic rail riders. I've been out there on the bikes, I guess they're called. I know how they work for the crossings that your cattle do. My son was a dairy farmer, and I appreciate the importance of safety of the cattle. So I'm sure we can work that out. I regret that we haven't, I guess, not owning the properties, it's hard to have conversations about the property, but I think perhaps we could have convened the principals, the Morrell family, the Merrimack Valley, the Merrimack Greenway folks, and the rail riders, even without owning it, to just make sure that we identify the issues so that if any issues were identified before we negotiated, we crafted the sales, purchase and sales agreement, we could have, if appropriate, incorporated it. I think a dual-use trail, my concern is that it will substantially increase the costs, and I would hate to have that cost borne by the taxpayers. Merrimack Valley, the Merrimack Greenway folks are doing a lot to raise both grants and donations, and I'm not sure where the other monies would come from to fund a dual-use trail. We don't know those numbers, but that would be my concern. So I will be supporting this as currently and hope that we can have further conversations with all three parties to have the best resolution possible.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Counselor Kurtz?
I just want to clarify. By voting yes, you would be also supporting the removal of the rails?
That's part of the, that's part of the purchase and sale agreement.
I see that it's, if I may, Mr. May.
Follow up?
I see that it's going to pass. I'm inclined to vote no because of that piece. I know that it's going to pass. I just feel uneasy leaving that open-ended with the rail trail, with the rail riders folks as well. I appreciate the encouragement of the conversation. I feel uneasy about that piece of it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Schultz. I think that the direction of the council, what the city manager and his staff will take away from this is conversation with all the parties.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else?
I will be voting in support of the prevailing motion. I too appreciate all of the testimony that we received, not only here in this room, but also the many emails that we received in support of this effort, as well as supporting the scenic rail riders. I appreciate the LeBlanc's time this morning to talk to me over coffee about this issue. I'm supporting this motion because I feel that time is of the essence on this project. As has already been mentioned, this project has gone on and on and on due to factors that were beyond the control of the city, despite all the work put into negotiating with Pan Am and the state and then CSX. My concern, as has been mentioned in the testimony, is that further delays jeopardizes losing the grant money that we have acquired so far. And any change in the purchase and sale agreement at this juncture would cause delay. I also am very concerned about CSX's appetite for further negotiations. So I think that we need to strike while the iron is hot. I regret the impact this may have on scenic rail riders. I deeply appreciate their operation in our city, their support, their membership in the Chamber of Commerce. At the same time, as has been mentioned several times in the testimony tonight and also in some of the correspondence we've received, there's great economic value to be gained through continuation of the rail trail from the north to the south going through the city. So I will be, as I said, voting in favor of the motion. Are we ready for the motion?
Yes.
All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The motion passes with the required two-thirds majority. This brings us to unfinished business. I recognize Counselor Kretovic.
See, I have a question, though, Your Honor.
Sorry?
I know you voted on this, but is it what Counselor Kretovic said about the city consulting or talking with the three? Is that part of the conversation as well? Is that captured in our minutes?
I think the city staff heard those comments.
Okay.
Our authorization, our authorization is to move forward with the purchase and sale agreement.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yes, Counselor, yes.
So just so you're aware, what essentially you did was, which is what we asked you to do, is we're now back to October eighteenth, 2021. That's where we are. So we're no further along than we were on that day when the state of New Hampshire exercised their right of first refusal. So we're going to go through that process all over again. And in the meantime, hopefully the grant doesn't disappear. And then they have as much really, you know, they have time to do that, to do what they need to do. And then if we get to that point, we would, we would hopefully get to a closing by February of 2026, and then we would own the property, hopefully. So there's ways to play out here. So again, we're back to October eighteenth, 2021. That's where we are.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So.
Excellent.
Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number forty-four in unfinished business was the ordinance that we had left on the table from the Heritage Commission. Since we made that motion to accept the revisions in item number thirty-seven of the agenda, I move to close this item.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Eyes have it, the motion passes. This brings us to items pulled from the consent agenda. Counselor, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you. Item number fourteen was pulled from the consent, pulled from consent by Counselor Brown. It's a de minimis gifts and donations report from the library director requesting authorization to accept gifts and donations totaling three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eight cents.
Thank you. Counselor Brown?
Yes, so actually, this is, I pulled this because one of the donations was a thousand dollars from the Catherine Pappas Revocable Trust, and that trust is, has nothing in it. And it hasn't since 2017. So I had a conversation with the library director, and I thought it would be helpful to understand the process of us receiving donations when there is an existing trust. He said they received the thousand dollars, and my understanding is that thousand dollars will have to be deposited into this pre-existing trust, and then he will have to request that money to come out again.
So, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I've, no, I mean, I don't understand what your point is, Counselor.
I'm asking if that is, if that is what happens, because the trust, as it is right now, has nothing in it. There is a trust in our MS nine reports, Catherine Pappas Revocable Trust, and there—
Revocable Trust?
Revocable, revocable. It is, it has, at one time, had almost ten thousand in it, and that was in 2016. So it has been in existence since 2016, but there's no money in it. So this looks like it's a thousand dollars coming from something that has nothing in it.
And is the library director here?
Yeah, is he here?
No. He's sick. He's sick. Okay. I mean.
Can the finance director explain how are the donations?
Good evening, Mr. Members of the Council.
Good evening, Mr. LeBron.
So this is a donation that has been granted to the city of Concord for a thousand dollars. That donation will be deposited into the trust based on the city council's approval of this item. That thousand dollars will remain in that trust until the city council takes a further action to appropriate that money. Just because there's no money in the trust now, if there's a trust established under that name, the dollars will just sit there. I would assume that during the course of the year or during a budget, the city council would appropriate the dollars, and then the dollars could be used as a funding source for something in the library. So this is a donation that we've received that will be placed in the trust until the council gives authorization to appropriate that money. It can't be spent.
Counselor?
Yes, so the other items that are in here, they don't go into the trust. They go—
The other items, I believe, I don't have it right in front of me, but the other items are grants and donations accounts, so that goes into a separate grants and donations fund that we have.
Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion, Counselor?
I make a motion that we approve it again. Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is adopted. Madam City Clerk, item eighteen.
This was pulled from consent by Counselor Kretovic and then Counselor Brown. It's a report from the deputy city manager and finance recommending approval of the proposed 2026 Beaver Meadow Golf Course rate structures as recommended by the Golf Course Advisory Committee.
Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to start by making a motion to approve their report and the rate structure for 2026.
Second. Moved and seconded, okay?
And then if I can speak to my motion. Believe it or not, Beaver Meadow Golf Course just had an extraordinary milestone. We've exceeded two million dollars in revenue for the first time in its history. And this success is no accident at all. It's the direct result of years of intentional work to increase play, attract new members, and operate the course in a financially responsible manner. The Golf Course Advisory Committee has recommended modest rate adjustments that will generate more than one hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars in additional revenue for the 2026 reason, season. These funds go directly towards the operational expenses of the course, ensuring continued financial independence from the general fund for protecting the taxpayer resources. All city departments and facilities receive some level of taxpayer support. And while the golf course does cover all of its operational expenses, some of the capital improvement program items are funded by taxpayers. Keeping things real and truthful, every department is touched by the CIP and funded by taxpayers. For all divisions, operational expenses primarily cover our employee wages and their benefits, while capital expenses involve the hard asset costs such as roads, fire trucks, police vehicles, even irrigation systems and facilities across the city. As a council, we made a commitment just two months ago to the taxpayers that the new clubhouse would have no financial impact for two years, that is until fiscal year 2028, and the gap to expend that commitment by one more year was forty thousand dollars, as reported by our city manager. This rate adjustment begins building toward that goal now, offsetting what would otherwise be a personal cost of twenty-five cents a month for the average-valued home. It's important to remember that seventy-three percent of our budget across the city goes towards our employee paychecks and their benefits. These employees are the true asset of our community, who keep our services running. Supporting our parks, pools, libraries, roads, public safety, recreational spaces, and more is part of a social contract in our community. And it includes the golf course, the airport, and the Everett Arena as well. These are all the things that make Concord work. Together as a community, we invest in what makes Concord a great place to live. This perspective is essential to maintain. The ongoing scrutiny of the golf course dates back to well over June 2022, and it includes more than a hundred inquiries into its operations. This level of focus has not been seen in any other facility. This disproportionate attention is fostering division rather than collaboration, and Concord is not an us-versus-then-community. We are a we-community, where every resident plays a part in building a positive, inclusive future together, including a wide variety of recreational opportunities that we offer here. And when one of those facilities, Beaver Meadow Golf Course, generates more than two million dollars in revenue, it demonstrates that these investments can deliver both community value and strong financial results. So I urge my fellow counselors to support the community-vetted recommendation from the Golf Advisory Board, volunteers who this year have faced unfair and deeply personal targeting. Instead of criticism, this council can express its gratitude for their hard work and dedication by approving these recommended rate changes for the 2026 season. Thank you for listening.
I would like to offer an amendment to accept the report with the slight change of not giving the steep discounts or the varied rates to the New Hampshire Golf Association.
Councillor, could you move your microphone closer?
Yes.
Did you catch the motion?
I think she wants to eliminate whatever is referenced rates for the New Hampshire Golf Association.
Could you repeat the motion?
I'd like to offer to pass all the rates as they are, except amending to have the New Hampshire Golf Association pay the normal tournament rates and not, it doesn't give us any, it just says rates stipulated by their proposal.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? If you lack any second, the motion fails. Councillor Brown?
Yes, I would like to, the reason I pulled this and the reason I do not believe we should accept these rates is they don't even meet the budget that we approved. If you look at the expectation that these rates will bring, they do not, and you look at our budget, they are below what we have budgeted for revenue. For example, the daily fees is below revenue. The car rental, the expectation is that in 2026, they will raise $335,000. Instead, these rates say they will only raise $279,823. The golf simulator revenue, the expectation is that it would raise, we should have $92,000, but these rates only will bring in $76,523. And the member revenue is lower than what is listed, and we know this because some of the members purchased their membership early, so they enjoyed the 2024 rates. They're not, they did not pay the full rate. So we need to make sure that the rates actually meet the revenue for the budget, because there, we have an expectation that the golf fund will be generating enough revenue to contribute to the clubhouse. Right now, they're not even meeting the budget that we approved for 2026. The fees that we set should at least support the budget, and I do not understand why we are allowing the New Hampshire Golf Association to use our property for free. We are paying people to mow the grass. I was out there today. They're watering. A lot of the fees, a lot of the rates are not being, we're not charging the New Hampshire Golf Association for a number of their tournaments. I don't think taxpayers elected us to grow the game of golf. Why that one sport? There are so many other sports that many of our residents enjoy. There is no reason why we should be allowing a separate entity to be charged for tournaments that they are not paying us for, and they're profiting in a big way. They are marketing, they are collecting sponsorships for their tournaments that they host at our golf course, and when they do that, they are blocking off opportunities for our residents to use the golf course. There is this great program called T-Snap. Phil Davis talked about it all the time. In 2018, he said he would produce reports for the committee so that they could look at the data to understand when to have tournaments and when to increase revenue. It made sense, and it was great. The golf advisory committee did not receive any reports from this program, T-Snap. Yet, T-Snap, there was a tournament today, and I was out there, the golf course was empty. But if you tried to schedule a tee time, you couldn't, because T-Snap said there are no tee times available. So we have leagues, loads of leagues, and, you know, we have salaries that are increasing. I don't understand why none of the leagues are increasing. The memberships are so far below other golf courses. The senior rate is over $1,200 lower than Canterbury. If you look at the sheet that we received comparing the other courses, you have to compare 2025. The rates for 2025 and the ones presented for the other courses are 2025. They are hundreds of dollars lower than other courses. So we are giving away our space, we're giving away time, and we're charging taxpayers more. I think that we need to go back, we can, need to table this so that the rates at least get us to budget, and I would like to see T-Snap reports that show how many, the rounds are decreasing. So we have decreasing rounds, we have decreasing simulator revenue. The golf course is not going to be generating enough money to pay the debt service for the parking lot that we just approved. They're not going to be making budget to contribute to the clubhouse. We can't approve these rates as they are right now.
Any further discussion? Councillor Fennessy.
Thank you. Respectfully, I have no idea where this math is coming from. I was at the meeting that went about, I think, two and a half hours, where the committee came up with its recommendations for rates. The city manager was there at the beginning, sort of talking through sort of his expectations of where rates needed to go. The story that you were just told about rounds being down does not compute with any of the information that I've received in the last five years, serving on the golf advisory committee. There was a very fulsome discussion about where we should go on rates, both greens fees and the season pass rates. We have increases that are, you know, definitely significantly higher than we've traditionally done in the past, and there's a lot of back and forth about, you know, how much of an increase we should do as compared to competitors, but also maintaining affordable rates for the citizens, because one of the things, it recognizes, obviously, taxpayers are contributing. So one of the things that got added at Councillor Kretovic's suggestion is that for non-residents of Concord, that they would have to pay a capital fee now as part of the season pass, which was sort of a reasonable, I think, way in which to recognize sort of that additional amount that taxpayers would be paying for the sort of capital improvements that they expect with the clubhouse. We've had increasing revenues over the last five years. This year, it went over $2 million, which was pretty significant. I think it would be in the best interest of the council to approve the rates as they've been recommended by the committee. I think there was a lot of time and effort put into them, and I think, I think, it's not in the best interest of this council to try and micromanage any department in the city. I'm not sure anybody sitting around this table is qualified to make determinations about how best to run a golf course, maybe the city manager. But the rest of us sitting around here, I don't think have those training and experience to do that, so I'm much more comfortable deferring to the recommendations that the committee, in connection with the professionals that we have working there, came up with.
The chair is going to entertain a motion to allow the city council to continue working after 11 o'clock.
Some of them have seconded.
Moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No.
All right. Councillor Kurtz.
Thank you. Could someone just speak to why New Hampshire Golf, rates stipulated by New Hampshire Golf proposals? I just have, I'm curious about why we're not setting terms for what we charge.
Councillor Kretovic.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the question. I'm not the person that sets those rates, with the exception that the New Hampshire Golf Association, the tournaments that they hold at Beaver Meadow, the entry fee covers a portion of the greens fees, and then there is a secondary portion that is a duplicate. So, for example, there was a two-day tournament earlier this year. They were partner tournament teams, $25 per day, per player, for the entry fee on one day and day two, so it's essentially $100. And the second half of that money goes to pro shop credit, meaning you win the tournament, you get money back. It's a guaranteed sale in the clubhouse to equipment, because they are amateurs, they cannot win cash, and therefore, the prize is basically a gift certificate only to be spent in the golf course, in the golf course clubhouse. That gift certificate in turn guarantees sales in the pro shop of the equipment that we fund every year in advance with the budget. So while it looks as though it is a lower greens fee, it's a lower greens fee, but it also comes with it a partnering sale in the pro shop, where other golf tournaments do not have that when it goes to a charitable organization. Those funds go to the charitable organization, and therefore, the greens fee is higher.
Councillor Kurtz, a follow-up?
Yes, please. Councillor Kretovic, I believe you're speaking to league and tournament fees. I see in the blue where it talks about pro shop credit. I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding, I'm asking about lower on the page, where in the New Hampshire Golf in bold, it says rates stipulated by NHG proposals events and rates subject to change year over year. And then there's a note about continuing to support New Hampshire Golf, to grow the game of golf. I'm just, is it, is it just, do we have nothing to quantify what they pay for tournaments? Is it a wild card? Because that's how it appears. I apologize if you answered me, and I did not understand that you were answering me.
LeBron is approaching the table.
Thank you, Mr. LeBron.
Honorable mayor, I'm Mr. City Council. I have Pat Lemon here with me, and just as we get started, I'd just like to, just like to note that Pat has been promoted to the position of Director of Operations permanently for Beaver Meadow Golf Course, so very pleased to report that this evening.
Congratulations. Thank you.
So, to answer your question, the New Hampshire Golf Association, and Pat has more details than I would have, but the New Hampshire Golf Association, they really don't pay us a whole lot of money to play golf at Beaver Meadow, which, you know, we understand that, and that's something that Beaver Meadow has done for many, many years. And the reason that we've looked at it that way over the years is that it's provided a lot of exposure to Beaver Meadow that has brought a lot of people there that may or may not have come to Beaver Meadow overall. It's good exposure in the golf industry, it's good exposure in the, it's just good exposure in the golf business across the state of New Hampshire. If the city council doesn't want to do it any longer, we can tell, you know, New Hampshire Golf Association that, you know, the city council won't allow us to do this anymore. But they're the ones that, when they bring their events around, they say, this is how much we're willing to pay for the event. It's either take it or leave it. So it's not something like we can go in and say, well, this is our rate, you know, they won't pay that, they'll go someplace else to do, you know, whatever they have to do, so. Did I explain that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct.
Can I follow? Is that the relationship that New Hampshire Golf has with all the places where they hold tournaments?
Yeah, when they hold these kind of events, they basically say, you know, this, the New Hampshire Golf Association goes in and they have these events at different places, and they say, this is, you know, this is the event, it's, you know, they look at it also as good exposure for the golf course, you know, this is what we can pay, and then, and if you want to do it, you do it, if you don't want to do it, you don't do it. Beaver Meadow has done it for many years, you know, again, part of the golf industry, part of golf in New Hampshire, good exposure for Beaver Meadow. Again, if the council doesn't want us to do it, you know, tell us, we'll let them know, and then we won't do it after this year.
Thank you, that was very helpful.
Mr. LeBron, could you outline, like, and Pat, so what's the advantage to Beaver Meadow? You said good exposure. What does that mean?
Yeah, I guess certainly the exposure brings people to the golf course. So, you know, we have, we've had, certainly have fluctuations in memberships over the years, and so, but certainly, over the past five or six years, when we've had a reduction in memberships, our greens fees has just completely blocked. So, you know, we have, you know, maybe a reduction in memberships, an increase in greens fee. If we have an increase in memberships, our green fees are down a little bit. Honestly, the, you know, the members are extremely important, the outings are extremely important, you know, the daily green fees are extremely important. So we look at it, and you have to kind of balance all of those out, but we make the most money on daily green fee play, and a lot of those people almost always rent carts. So it's, you know, you're getting the money from the greens fees and the carts, whereas in some other situations, you don't necessarily get all of it.
Thank you. Councillor Horn.
I'm concerned about giving New Hampshire Golf, I'm concerned about the wording, especially on here, is that we're growing the game of golf for New Hampshire. Their, New Hampshire Golf is a 501(c)(3), so their 990s are online, you can look them up. I just picked a random year, because I was not sure how long we've been helping them grow the game of golf, but in 2014, they had $454,000 in revenue. Their latest report, 2023, they're up to $1.1 million in revenue. Their assets in 2014 were $178,000, now their assets are $862,000. So I feel like we've helped them grow their game substantially. And in our city, we have so many other sports. Youth sports have been declining in participation since 2019, and COVID did not help that. And the former U.S. Surgeon General said that loneliness, lack of connection are public health challenges that needs immediate attention when children are dropping out of sports. It can cause increased anxiety, depression, contribute to decline in overall physical activity. Team sports offer opportunity for social development, teamwork, which can be missed when participation declines. The best way to address decline is investment in community-based programs. So I feel like just picking golf out and saying that we're funding them to help grow the game of golf is sort of hurtful to Concord Crush or New Hampshire Lightning or the multiple youth sports programs that we have, and I think for equity, it's one way or the other. We either don't sponsor New Hampshire Golf, or we come up with a way to help grow the games that I've just mentioned here, through giving, you know, reductions in fees at Parks and Rec and things like that. That was my only, I think, I appreciate the time put in to come up with the other fees. I think they're all reasonable. I think it's fair to keep our fees a little bit lower, that's what people enjoy about the golf course, but funding this 501(c)(3) that seems to be doing pretty well, I just don't think is for us as a community.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Brown?
Yes, I would also like to, thank you, councillor Horn. Also, there has been no investment in our kids, Concord kids. There is still nothing in the Concord Parks and Rec summer fall brochure for our kids, and that's a problem. And when I look at Parks and Recreation, they are very clear about their fees and reservations, and that should be the same at Beaver Meadow. New Hampshire Golf Association should have to pay the tournament rate, they should have to pay in advance. It is astounding to me that this one organization throughout Concord has been given a pass. This is 169 acres. We have manufactured homes that are going to be hit with increased tax bills, and the golf course is going to be a big chunk of that. The debt service for the clubhouse is $476,000 a year for 20 years, and I don't see how these fees are going to contribute to that, especially not if we're giving a pass to an organization that, as councillor Horn pointed out, is doing very well.
Any other comment? Councillor Kurtz.
Just to clarify, Mr. LeBron, if we do not accept what New Hampshire Golf is offering, they would, we don't get to set the price. They would just not hold events at Beaver Meadow?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you.
Ready for the question?
Could you rephrase?
The question is, the motion is to approve item 18.
To accept the report. I'd like to make a motion to table this until the rates are brought to meet budget. There is no math. You can, I can assume that the golf association-
Councillor, is there a second? There being no second, the motion fails. Are we ready for the question?
To accept the report.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. Thank you. Thank you, councillor. All right, all those in favor, the motion is presented, please signify by saying aye. The call has been requested. Madam City Clerk?
Councillor Brown? No. No.
Mayor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Finacy?
Yes.
Counselor Foot?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Horn?
No.
Counselor Keach is not here. Counselor Credit Vic?
Yes.
Counselor Kurtz?
Yes.
Counselor McLaughlin?
Yes.
Counselor McNamara?
Yes.
Counselor Schlosser?
Yes.
Excuse me, yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Seku?
Yes.
And Counselor Todd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next item is item 27, Madam City Clerk.
This was full Trump consent by Counselor Brown. It's a resolution rescinding the appropriation of the sum of $4,413,70 and 78 cents in various funds retroactive to June 30th.
Counselor?
Yes, so I pulled this because I did not understand the language in the report. I'm not sure if this is, if, where this, if this money is going somewhere else, if this money was expended.
Mr. LeBron?
Thank you so much for having me up here again.
We missed you.
I knew you did. So, I also have Audrey Masters here with me, she's actually the author of the report, so I'll let her address the issue.
Sure, so, good evenings, members of the city council, mayor. This report basically, and the accompanying resolution essentially is a housekeeping effort, a long overdue and very extensive housekeeping effort. The vast majority of these grants that we are deauthorizing are reimbursement basis, so we only get paid what we pay out. And as you can see from kind of the more detailed list, a lot of it is small, you know, type grant projects for police patrols, fire training programs. There's a number of CDBG, which is Community Development Block Grant money as well, which again, you know, that's basically us passing the dollars through to some sort of sub-grantee. And there is, you know, for the most part, those are, you know, the projects have been completed, and then that is basically money that's just left over where we had kind of applied for and had been authorized by city council more than what ended out being necessary and needed.
Follow up?
Yes, so I've just, so the amount to deauthorize, that's because this is reimbursement, so you were authorized, let's say I'll use the first, the one, the Aeronautics Bureau, the amount to deauthorize is 32,000. So that is an example of you were authorized 32,000 more than what you used.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's, okay, so this, none of this money is actually sitting with us?
No.
Okay.
No.
Thank you, that is very helpful, I did not understand the report.
Sounds suspiciously like what I told you two hours ago.
Move approval of the report.
Counselor Horn?
It's late, so forgive me, I can't remember, but I feel like there was stuff on there from 2020-ish. Is it typical to go that long before this report that you're doing and the deauthorizing?
So, when I say this is long overdue, some of this goes back even further, and even before I started here in 2017, I know it's something Brian and I have talked about for a while, you know, kind of going through this process. We go through the CIP closeout process, which looks at CIP projects, but have never done any sort of review of this nature with the grant projects. So this was kind of an exhaustive review of close to about 300 projects total. This is something that we are hoping to continue on an annual basis, so I don't anticipate that it'll be nearly to this volume or number of projects in the future. So this is a very long overdue.
Perfect, thank you.
Move approval of the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Mike, thank you very much. Mike, great, somebody turned off the microphones. This brings us to comments, requests.
You pause the...
Suspense.
Oh, I'm sorry, suspense, thank you very much. All right.
Motion to suspend the rules.
So, or second, so whateverd.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes by the required two-thirds majority. Madam City Clerk.
The suspense one item is a report to council from the city solicitor's office regarding House Bill 467.
The city manager.
This is, you can see there's an extensive timeframe in the report under the social district timeline, you have an opportunity under House Bill 467 that was just recently signed into law to define an outdoor area, persons may consume alcoholic beverages sold by a license. We don't have any particular areas in mind, it's just if you want to keep this option out there, this has to be on the ballot that comes up in November. So you have a whole series of things that need to happen. John, you want to talk, and talk anything specifically that you need to get into it? John Conforti, Deputy City Solicitor, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'll be brief. As the city manager said, the legislature has recently authorized social districts, but that is being done at the local option of each municipality. So in order to move forward, if we have any interest in moving forward with a social district, we would need to put it on a ballot, obviously, next election opportunity would be in November. So the timeline for that is, if you wanted to, as a legislative body, you could decide on your own to place that on a ballot. You do not need to have a public hearing just to take the action to place it on the ballot, although you, you can, but you only have until your September meeting to do that. So if you do want to have a public hearing before making a decision as to whether to put it on the ballot, that would have to be done at your next meeting in September. At that point, if you decide to move forward with putting it on the ballot, then there would need to be a public hearing before the ballot initiative, which has to happen within a shot clock period, which would sit actually perfectly within your October meeting, so you could have a public hearing in October if you decided to put it on the ballot.
So can I paraphrase you? Can I paraphrase you?
Sure.
So basically, what we're doing, what we're looking at right now is, do we notice this for a public hearing at our next meeting in September, where we then, after the public hearing, would decide whether to put this on the ballot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Credit Vic.
Thank you, Your Honor, I'll be supporting this action. I think it's really important for our community to look at the organizations we support, like In-Town Concord for Market Days, they typically have to have a beer tent. It would allow them to have a social district at their event, that could be more expansive and more inclusive. It'll also allow the opportunity for other nonprofit organizations to as well have events. We are about to embark on our 250, 300 anniversary in the city of Concord. We're hoping that more nonprofit organizations can participate in those events, and oddly enough, our constitution was ratified because people were drinking alcohol. Thank you.
That's an interesting take on history, thank you.
I do have a caution and a concern, because I think the example that you just gave, In-Town, city of Concord, the license will be through the In-Town, right?
Correct.
Who is going to administrate when it's time to cut them off because they had too much drinks? Because we are talking about it as social. So that's my concern, the safety concern of our resident.
Mr. Conforti, would you, if I may ask you, could you explain how if, if in fact we put this on the ballot and the voters approve it, could you explain how it works?
Yes, approving it on the ballot would just give you the opportunity to set up social districts in the future. You, the municipality would then have to make a decision on where you would set it up, and then there's a maintenance plan that would need to be established and submitted to the liquor commission. The liquor commission would then need to approve that, so there are a number of things that we already know need to happen. For example, there needs to be signage, there need to be designated points at the edges of the social districts where liquor can be thrown out before you exit the social district. There are restrictions on the licensees, so these will obviously all be people who have existing liquor licenses. They have restrictions on the type of containers that they can serve in, where these can be served, these, this liquor can't cross licensees, so for example, if you go to Bar A and come out, you could come out into the social district and enjoy that outside, but you can't then go into Bar B with that.
How about if it's empty?
Even if it's empty, I, you have to go and get another, another container, because actually each container has to be labeled specific to the licensee, so it can be identified for the licensee. So, the, the other thing I'll just say briefly is, there, this just passed, literally, the statute has not gone into effect yet, it includes a requirement that the liquor commission develop administrative rules, which obviously they have not done yet, so there'll be additional requirements and, and rules that go around the creation of the social district, but that will be a process that the city will have to go through with the liquor commission if we decide to go that route.
Follow up?
Thank you, Your Honor, just as a follow up, because my understanding is that you said it's going to be existing license, so it's not like the organization that are organizing the event, it's more like people that already had the license, is that correct?
You, my understanding is you would have to have a liquor license as, right now, in the way that, that if you're a pouring establishment as you are now, I know that, for example, Market Days, that there are people who have licenses to serve at that, so you can have a license, it would be the licenses as they are now, you would be able to serve as a licensee, this is just, again, creating a district where people can consume outside as they move from licensee to licensee.
Just, thank you, Your Honor, as a follow up on that, during that process, do we have the authority to dictate how many alcohol people can consume, or that will be just based on the licensing, people that have the license have to take that ownership?
So it's the responsibility for serving and all the rules and laws associated with that remain with the licensee who's serving the alcohol. We will have some responsibilities with regard to maintaining the district, and signage and security and those types of things, and making sure that we make clear where the boundaries are of that district, but in terms of the actual service, that, that responsibility would remain with the licensee.
Thank you. Counselor Finacy?
I'd like to make a motion to set this down for a public hearing in September.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Now we have public comment. Counselor Foot?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Briefly, I attended a national night out, and I just wanted to thank all the city staff, police, fire, general services for their turnout, what a great job they did representing the city. It was neat. And then secondly, we had another cleanup over in East Concord about a month ago, Counselor Kurtz showed up along with about 12 other volunteers from actually all over the city, West Concord, East Concord, South Concord, Pennacook, it was pretty cold, cleaned up Colonel John Pecker Park at the intersection of Mountain Road and Shaker Road, so thanks for everyone that showed up.
Are we going this way this time?
We're going this way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I decided I was going to speak about two incidents that happened in our city. There's a difficult segue to the third one, so hang in there with me, I'm going to be as brief as everyone else. First, I want to thank Chief Chisholm did a wonderful job on the night of a horrible fire in Ward Eight, in what was an inextensively, you know, ostensibly a difficult time for our firefighters. The way he spoke to citizens through WMUR was about as good as anyone handling crisis communications could do with conveying difficult information with confidence, and definitely made me proud to be a Concord city counselor. And I want to say to the firefighters who responded to that difficult incident that their work matters. I think all of us feel that way. Then there was a second event, an unfortunate pedestrian death in Ward Nine on Loudoun Road recently. Again, a difficult job that our police officers have to do to investigate after a difficult incident and the death of a citizen then as well. I really appreciate all of their efforts as well, and I'm sure everyone here does. I think that in both instances, I can't imagine what it must be like to be a first responder, doing your job professionally, yet knowing you have to delay whatever feelings you have about what happened. And I just want, I ask this, any way that this can be conveyed on our behalf, to thank the firefighters and the police officers for their public service in representing us and doing their professional duties on those days, they have the great gratitude of all of us, however we convey that. Awkward segue to the third situation. As you, I'm sure, no doubt know, there was an incident of Nazis, I'll call them Nazis my word, arriving in our capital city recently without a permit. There was an organization that has had a permit on City Hall Plaza, the 5051 or 50501, I've heard it pronounced a couple different ways, they had a permit, and they have been peacefully assembling for many months now. I participated, I know I'm not the only one that has participated in there, I feel healthy, nonviolent frustrations with our federal government in that, in those instances, but the Nazis showed up on that same day. And here's the question, that there's no, as far as I know, decent way for any citizen to raise this issue any other way than through us at this period of time. So I hope no one feels blindsided, but it was my impression that the FBI gave the Concord Police Department the heads up that the Nazis would be there on that day ahead of time. From what I understand, and again, through the media, not through any special connection I have as a counselor, that none of this was communicated with the citizens who had the permit to give them the heads up that there would be this difficult potential encounter. We do have peacekeepers that are well-trained to be there, that are civilians that participate in these sort of events, and they do their best to keep things from becoming violent. There was an unfortunate act of violence that I know nothing about, but I do think that if this is true, that our police department in our city were given the heads up in some way, shape, or form ahead of time, that the Nazis were going to be there, I would like to request that we let those that are permitted know that this is going to happen in a way that's fair and safe for everybody. I think that why that didn't seem to happen is of concern to me, so, again, awkward transition to that topic, but I think it bears asking in this forum. And I would love to follow up in whatever way is appropriate from these remarks to make sure that our citizens are well-informed, and again, I appreciate the police officers and the firefighters and all of our first responders for all they do for our city, and I believe in free speech, and I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Just a second.
Thank you, Your Honor, hard to follow, but...
I'm sorry.
It is. I personally spoke with the city manager, I spoke with many other law enforcement on this issue, because as you said, safety is a key component of what I believe and what I try every day. I had to answer many questions, including talking to her. I do want to second what Counselor Schultz said about our firefighters, about the fire that happened in Ward Eight. I personally spoke with the chief about this and trying to see if there was any need, and what should I do to support people that were affected by this fire. And he took his time to explain exactly what they do, from the time they come in contact with folks affected by this, to the time that they put them in shelters, people with family, goes to their families, people who's of the family, they take care of them, and all the process was explained to me, and I felt confident that they were in good hands, so thank you for raising that. I have two things. First, I want to say, Ward Eight Counselor and Ward Nine Counselor, and again, State Representative Chris Schultz is pleased to announce we are hosting a community conversation on August 19 from 6 to 8 at this... on August nineteenth from six to eight at this community-wide center. We will be joined by our state Senator Tara Riden, our state representative Merrill Gibbs, our state representative James Rosen, Rosen, Resener, and state representative Gary Wood. All are invited. And my slogan in this is, your words, your voice. Please show up, ask your questions, and let this together. We look forward to this conversation. My second thing is that I had the honor and privilege to represent the city of Concord at the Disability Pride Parade on Saturday, July twenty-sixth, organized by Able New Hampshire. And I read the city proclamation. It was very well-attended and very well-organized. Thanks Counselor Schulte for attending, and we got a chance to connect and talk about many issues that are affecting our community, and also the great opportunity and the blessing that the city has. On that note, we met a lot of community leaders, and we met a lot of our community members that are doing outstanding work there. So thanks to all that made it happen, that made this a successful event. I have a question, because this, I don't know when was the right time to ask this question, but this is for you, Counsel. Didn't, yes, you. During your conversation earlier, you said that we have, of course, let me just say this, I personally appreciate the expertise and experience that the city management and operation of golf courses bring, but during your conversation, you said that we don't have that authority or power or experience, I'm sorry, to make a decision on that. Is that part of authority also to set the golf course numbers, rates? Even if we don't have the experience, we do have the authority?
I think my comment was more to the effect that we, sitting around here, don't have the knowledge and experience to run the business operations of a golf course. That's why we have a city manager, we have a deputy city managers, we have professionals who work at the golf course, so, you know, I don't think we should be trying to micromanage how departments work.
But the responsibility that we have on taxpayers, because now we are talking about rates, we are talking about citizen, resident of the city of Concord, we do have the authority to make sure that the price we set determine that. Is that correct?
Mr. City Manager.
Oh. I'll tell you how I took it. I took it as, it's the city council's responsibility to manage the policy and the cost association with the budget, just as you would on anything else, which is, in reality, you think about almost every cost item, it's a policy decision, you're making decisions on how it all works. So that is all completely your responsibility, and that's what you should be doing. And, but in terms of the day-to-day management pieces of it, as you've always said to me, no, that's your job.
No, that's your job. And I don't need that, to be honest with you, but I just wanted to clarify that, because I took it a different level. It's like, it's not our responsibility, we should not be mingling. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Schloss, I know. Counsel Fantasy, anything?
If I had anything, I forgot.
Sorry.
Thank you, I wrote two things down. If anyone gets this far in the meeting, September seventh at Everett Arena, the Boston Bruins Fan Fest is coming to town, one of three locations, from eleven AM to two PM. This is a free event, so if you have a hockey fan, or a Bruins fan, or just a sports fan, or you need something to do, they do encourage you to register in advance, NHL.com, and then click on the link for Fan Fest. And I am not a hockey mom, but there was something about equipment fittings. So if you're a parent getting your kiddo into hockey, and you want some professional advice on what size of all the things, check out that part of it, okay? Also, we are in the middle of the Sunflower Bloom Festival at Sunfox Farm, which is an amazing agricultural asset, right in the middle of our urban corridor. Ten to six daily, that started the ninth, running through the seventeenth, twelve dollars for adults, kids ten and under free. Maybe Counsel Brown knows if I got that wrong. Kids are free, double-check online at Sunfox.
That's a problem.
I was just going to say that, too. Go to Sunfox Farm, it is fabulous, beautiful, attracts everyone. And if you're not a golfer, go to Beaver Meadow and just observe, just watch. I, you can bike out there and hang out on the patio, just watch.
You can bike on the golf course?
No, you bike, you can bike there.
To, to.
Bike, yes, bike there, and you can also walk around it, there's the Upland Trail, so you can, you can see what it looks like. But yeah, you can hang out on the patio and, and watch.
I want to give a shout out to Helen and Gray Fitzgerald, who have started the flower garden down at the corner of Washington and North State, they've been working on this for fifteen years, and it's quite the pollinator garden. He needed to take a break, so our wonderful Lucy Gentleholz has taken it over, and she has gotten volunteers. I want to shout out for Kevin Gray, Millie LaFane. If you stop at that intersection, you'll be amazed with all the bees and all the buzzing, all the pollinators, it's just pretty phenomenal. So thank you to those wonderful people for adding some beauty to that intersection.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kretovic.
Thank you. I wanted to just briefly thank my fellow colleagues here at the council table that reached out after the article in the Concord Monitor regarding the discussion that we had at the DEIJB committee, especially those that understood that something was wrong in the article. While the newspaper has since issued a retraction, that correction just didn't seem to carry the same weight as the first article did in our community. And unfortunately, there has been some real harm done in our community, especially among our new immigrant communities, our new Americans, and anyone that always feels as though they're on the edge or on the outside of the norm here. The outcome, I'm sure, is deeply regrettable, but I think it was also avoidable. And despite this, there is one thing that remains clear, and that is the majority of the voice at this council table. They really do support the positivity around this table. It's very strong, it's very steadfast, and to my colleagues here, I very much appreciate all of your outreach to us. I know I'm not alone. Counsel Seku, Mayor Champlin did receive comments from people, as well as the people that serve in our DEIJB committee, despite the conversation that came to us, it was more important that they heard from this council, that you support the efforts, and you support the efforts of every voice, every resident in the city of Concord. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counsel More.
Fall sports registration is open for Concord Parks and Rec, flag football, six to fourteen years old, and fall soccer grades K through six. Your deadline is August fifteenth at ConcordParksAndRec.com.
Well, I'm going to wrap things up on a really positive note here, which is Wednesday, August thirteenth, that's this Wednesday, for any of you still awake and actually hearing this, as Counsel Kirk's reference, the official grand opening of the Canal Street Riverfront Park, and that's going to be at five-thirty. We're going to have pizza from Chiefs, ice cream from Sweet Dreams, and then you can stick around at six-thirty for the concert by, at the pavilion. I'm also going to be taking around a little collection of folks to carry around Matt Walsh on our shoulders for a couple of minutes. Thank you for all those efforts over the decades that it took to get this project finally finished, so. So anyway, I hope to see all of you there, it should be a really fun, great event. Wear shorts and short sleeves, though, that's going to be the only catch, but other than that, should be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, now you have something.
Counselor Todd's comment prompted me to remember that after you enjoy the park opening, come to the meeting about Memorial Field at seven o'clock on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Where, Counselor?
Heights Community Center.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor still has the last word, so, and I'm going to be very brief. On tonight's consent calendar, there was a report that for the thirteenth year in a row, our city finance department has received a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This award from the Government Finance Officers Association recognizes our finance department's work on the annual comprehensive financial report for the 2024 fiscal year. It's, the award cites the finance department's constructive spirit of full disclosure and clearly communicating the city's financial story. So congratulations to the finance department and the deputy city manager for finance, Brian LeBrun, for this recognition by their peers. I'd also like to announce the, did you want to take a bow?
No, I want to, I want to recognize everybody else that works in the finance department.
I know.
I hear you. I also like to announce the creation of the Ad hoc Committee on Impact Fees. The members will be Counselors Todd, Kurtz, and Foot, as well as the chairman of the City Economic Development Advisory Committee, and a designee of the Greater Concord Chamber of Commerce. The mayor will also serve as an ex-official member, and Counselor Todd will chair. Thank you to all those who have agreed to serve. And finally, I'd like to announce the appointment of Counsel Seku to the parking committee. He said he didn't have enough to do, so.
That was my words.
And also, finally, and very last, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I would like to recognize Tobias Minor, who has hung in to the very, very end.
Yay!
Our city council meetings, and if you need a letter of recommendation to your scoutmaster, you know where to find me. Entertained, let me see, Counselor Foot moves that we adjourn. Counselor Todd seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it.
The night, I'm going to wait till tomorrow.